All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're back for Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my right by Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee; Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Antonio Glover, 13th District, to my left; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee; and Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee. We are also joined by Deputy CAO Simone Johnson and Assistant Deputy CAO Alan Robinson. We are here for DPW. A couple of quick ground rules before we begin. For folks who have not used these before, there is a red button. It's the button on the right in front of you. It looks like the little person. That needs to be read in order for you to speak, so folks that are watching at home can hear you. When you're done speaking, please turn that light off. These microphones are very sensitive. That's the first thing. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or vibrate or some other setting that does not make noise. What we're going to do, Director, I'm going to turn it over to you in a moment. I'm going to ask you to introduce all the senior members of your team that are in these chairs here that are going to be testifying this evening. If you could say their name and their position title, then I'm going to ask you to jump through your slide deck. How much time do you anticipate needing for the 19 slides?
30 minutes.
Okay, great. And then we'll jump into questions from the council. Also been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen from 1st District with that. And we have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 14th, or from the 10th District, and Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District. No need to come in, just getting the introductions out of the way. Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to thank the Chair, Vice President Middleton, Honorable Members of this body for allowing us to present on our budget today. For the record, my name is Jason Mitchell. I'm the Director of the Department of Public Works. And to make sure I follow the rules, I want to introduce our executive leader team, leadership team, and key members of our team that will be providing the majority of the responses today. To my right, we have Deputy Director Richard Luna, who oversees our administration portion of our Department of Public Works. We have the famous Ms. Marcia Collins, who handles all of our policy matters here in Public Works. We have our Acting Bureau Chief of Water and Wastewater, Paul Sayon. We have our Acting Bureau Chief over Solid Waste, Ms. Yvonne Moore Jackson. Behind me, we have our General Counsel and our Chief Compliance Officer, Darnell Ingram, right behind me. To my far left over there is Mr. Marco Merrick. He's our Chief of Equity within the department, and he makes sure that we have equity in all we do. To his left is our Acting CFO, Regent Lee, who manages all of our financials day-to-day and helped prepare the budget and presentation that you see before us. And then behind them, we do have our Chief of Staff, Mitch Audrey V. Jones Taylor, in the back. And we have many, many members of the wonderful DPW team here to support us and to answer any questions that you have after our presentation. Again, we'll be looking for about 30 minutes for our presentation. We have approximately 19 slides to provide this body. And with that, and before we get started, I just want to kick off. Our Deputy Director Luna will run us through our slides and our presentation. I will do a slight kickoff, and then I would do a summary at the end of the presentation, if that's okay with the Chair. But before we get started, I just want to, as you know, Public Works is, I would say, the heartbeat of our city. And for that heartbeat to work, it takes all of our DPW members to make that happen. The team that you see present here today, but all the folks that is working 24/7 to make it happen, whether that's in our Solid Waste Unit, folks managing our water wastewater treatment plants, our people just out cleaning our storm inlets. It takes a team to do it, and I want to thank our DPW team. As many of you know, our team worked through a pandemic. Our team worked through rain, sleet, snow. They show up every day, understanding that there's been inadequate investment in their facilities, their fleet, them as individuals, but yet they still get up every day for Baltimore City. And many of them are residents of this wonderful city. And so I just want to thank them. But also, I want to thank each one of you. I think over my tenure, over the last two years, each one of you has advocated for our employees. Each one of you have provided lunches, thank yous, come and speak with our staff. I do want to say I thank you for your leadership, but more importantly, it means a lot when our leaders come and speak to our employees. It keeps them going every day to do the challenging work that they do. And so I just want to take the time to pause and say thank you all for that work, because it's critical in ensuring that we have the right morale and our folks are focused on the job at hand, and we know that job is tough. And with that, I also want to thank our administration was here. I know our Deputy City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator Johnson and Robinson was here. I know City Administrator Leach will be here shortly. I want to thank them. But I also want to thank Mayor Scott. As you see in this budget, there's a significant investment in DPW, resources that we need to continue to make sure that our public get the programs that they need, that they get equipment that they need, that they get the facilities and restrooms and break rooms, lockers, the basic amenities that they deserve. So I just want to say thank you to Mayor Scott for supporting this team, the administration for supporting this team, and for you all to continue to support us. It will continue to make this department best in class. So it's a team effort in making this happen. I know we're all part of that team, so I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, I'm going to yield my time to our Deputy Public Works Director, Richard Luna, to work us through our slide deck and our presentation. And Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good evening, Chair Costello, Honorable City Council. Again, my name is Richard Luna, the Deputy Director for DPW, and be presenting our fiscal year 24 budget with you all tonight. Before I jump into the slides, I do want to take this opportunity to recognize some of the highlights and accomplishments that our staff has completed throughout the current fiscal year. So starting back at the beginning of fiscal year 23, we began by implementing the lowest water rate increases Baltimore City residents had experienced in the previous two decades. It's through the many customer service improvement initiatives that we started back in fiscal year 22 and continued with this year that we were able to realize a nearly 70% reduction in water rates compared to the previous years. Those customer service enhancements include the rollout of paperless billing, an improved online customer portal, and improvements in implementation of a new payment plan service. With a stronger focus on training, our CSSD staff has addressed and eliminated thousands of backlog requests. And now when customers call into our call center, staff is picking up the phone in under a minute. Many days, it's under 30 seconds. Through the Water for All program, we have given out over $2 million in water billing assistance funds to those in need. And in the coming months, over $15 million will go to our customers in paying off past water bill debt after we secured the largest portion of state funds available under a new program. I want to thank the multiple team members that worked successfully on those areas. Within our Bureau of Solid Waste, we launched our new Office of Waste Diversion, which is working on new strategies to engage and educate the public on various programs we offer to reduce waste. And the office is looking at various opportunities to plan ahead for a more sustainable Baltimore City. This year, the Solid Waste Team held multiple public workshops as they developed a new 10-year solid waste management plan. The plan looks ahead as we prioritize waste prevention and diversion, manage sustainable materials, and orient solid waste disposal activities to serve the city's best interests. The plan is in its final draft form, and we look forward to working with the council in the months ahead to adopt the plan. Finally, by working with the multiple city agencies, our Solid Waste Team identified the staffing and resources needed to implement weekly recycling in the first quarter of 2024, and I'm going to speak more on that here shortly. Through innovation within our Bureau of Water and Wastewater, DPW was honored earlier this year and gained membership into the leading utilities of the world network. Members of this group represent the gold standard of utility innovation and performance throughout the developed world's water sector. It's a testament to the outstanding work our staff performs on a daily basis to deliver excellent water to the greater Baltimore area. This year, we welcomed our first cohort of the Be More Wise program. Be More Wise is building DPW's pipeline of qualified talent in the water and wastewater industry. It is a great workforce development program that is uniquely focused on training and certification. And speaking of investing in our workforce, under Mayor Brandon Scott's leadership, DPW worked with DHR and multiple city agencies in creating a $10,000 retention and bonus program to employees with a commercial driver's license. We're also nearing implementation of a class and compensation study that will increase salaries for our water and wastewater positions. Those are just a few of the many achievements from this year, and during the remainder of the budget hearing, I anticipate we'll be able to share much more of those and how we're working to make this agency best in class. To be best in class, it starts with our mission of supporting the health, environment, and economy of our city and the region by providing customers with safe drinking water and keeping neighborhoods and waterways clean. We are nearing completion of a new strategic plan for the agency, which we intend to launch in the coming weeks. And in the plan, our mission and vision will get a fresh update as we continue to support those core principles of building a cleaner, healthier, and more vibrant region. And part of how we strategically plan for the future is investing in our staff. One of the top coals of DPW, not just in fiscal year 24, but in the years ahead, is to be the best-in-class agency that can retain, attract, and develop a talented and engaged workforce. That starts by offering more trainings to our staff, like our new supervisor training that we launched earlier this month and will continue in the new year. Or the CDL Training Program, where employees are offered a free pathway to obtain a CDL, which opens the door to promotional opportunities within DPW. I'm happy to say that the CDL Training Program is now available to new hires, which will further improve our ability to attract and retain drivers needed for stabilizing routine services. We also want to build trusted relationships with customers and stakeholders through accountability, transparency, and effective solution delivery. That means a continued focus on improving customer experiences, like our new website that will be launched in the new year, and the completion of our water billing system upgrades plan for the fall of '23. A huge help in building trusted relationships with the public is our Residential Advisory Council, which we launched earlier this year, and we will continue to work with them in the years to come. We also want to recognize and thank our RAC members for their continued commitment in helping DPW provide services to the community. Additionally, as one of our goals, we want to efficiently manage DPW's financial resources. So what does that mean? It means doing the proper research, analysis, and assessments to ensure we identify sufficient resources to meet our organizational needs. Currently, we are working on a zero-waste feasibility study that will help us comprehensively plan next steps for how to achieve the city's zero-waste goals. And finally, we intend to optimize our operations by continuously reviewing and improving processes. That means regularly checking ourselves and working as a team to identify where we can streamline and improve. By focusing on those four goals that you see there on the slide, DPW will continue to improve year after year, and this upcoming fiscal year 24 budget will help us in achieving those initiatives. Just an overview of the Public Works Agency. Obviously, we're one of the largest agencies in Baltimore City, and we also serve as a regional water utility. DPW has several service areas that are critical in sustaining the region's health, environment, and communities. Overall, for the fiscal year 24 budget, it includes $667 million in operating expenditures, $599 million in capital expenditures, and 2,800 budgeted positions. I'm going to talk more on the slides ahead about those specific areas, but first, we wanted to talk about how this proposed budget stabilizes our routine services. So on the screen in front of you is a comparison of what routine services looked back in fiscal year 2010 and what it looks like today in fiscal year 2023. So I'm going to start first on the left side of the screen, and then I'll move over to the right side. So on the left side, it shows you the 1+1 Recycling Program back in fiscal year 2010. In 2010, those were those yellow bins that residents purchase and opted into in order to participate in weekly recycling. At the time, 25% of the city participated in the program based on the 41,000 yellow bins that were distributed. That is not an equitable program. At that time, we had 68 crews assigned to routine services, and of those, 20 were assigned to recycling on average each workday. With the service levels during that time, the recycling crews could complete their work on average within eight hours. And the data point I want to stress and highlight on the screen is the average number of stops by recycling crew in 2010. That number, the 1,025 figure, was lower than industry standards for a weekly recycling program. So now moving over to the right side of the screen, this is what the program looks like today. You have the same number of crews running the program. However, we have vastly expanded the amount of recycling participants without making any changes to our staffing or vehicle levels. This change was a result of rolling out 170,000 blue recycling carts. That means you have staff working on average 11.6-hour shifts to complete biweekly recycling pickups for the day. Or in other words, you have staff working 23.3-hour shifts if you task them with implementing weekly recycling today without addressing the staffing or the vehicle issues. Obviously, that is not practical. All of this because of a 315% increase from yellow bins to the blue carts without any additional resources. Now let's compare the stops per recycling crew. Like I mentioned, back in 2010, it was 1,025, and now in 2023, it's 2,600, over 2,600. That's more than double the yellow bin program and more than double the industry best standards. Because staff is out there averaging more than double the stops per recycling crew, routine services relies consistently on help crews to complete biweekly recycling pickups. I believe we can all recognize that the current state of routine services is just unsustainable. You have staff working longer hours, which leads to more overtime and more fatigue. And so the way to address these specific issues is through increasing staffing and ordering new trucks. So now we're going to move over to the fiscal year 24 recommended budget. We're going to start again on the left side, and this is how we address those two issues on the staffing and the vehicle purchases. I'm going to focus first on staffing, and then we're going to talk about vehicle purchases next. The recommended fiscal year 24 budget includes funding for 10 new crews for routine services, which will only stabilize biweekly recycling. That's the left side of your screen. We go from 68 crews to 78 crews, and we believe this will reduce the need for those help crews, which reduces overtime and staff fatigue. In this situation, we believe crews can complete their current biweekly recycling pickup schedule within their 10-hour shift. No, the 10 crews alone cannot provide weekly recycling. I wanted to make that clear. In order to implement weekly recycling in the first quarter of '24, the city needs 20 new crews and new trucks that are scheduled to arrive by Q1 of calendar year 2024. The 20 new crews are funded for half the fiscal year and are split between the general fund and ARPA funds. These 20 crews and new trucks that are already on order are what gets us to weekly recycling in the first quarter of 2024, if all goes as planned. These new crews are only funded for half the fiscal year because the large majority of new trucks will arrive by early 2024, and like I mentioned, you need both the staffing and the vehicles in order to make this happen. Now draw your attention on the right side of your screen to the number of recycling stops. By adding the 20 new crews, the average number of recycling stops per crew significantly reduces and gets us closer to industry standards. We know DPW staff outperforms contractors and are some of the hardest-working women and men in the country, and this will be the first investment for staffing since weekly recycling was introduced back in 2010. And it helps correct the lack of staff and vehicle enhancements that were needed when the blue carts were rolled out two years ago. So what we did is took that same information that was presented to you in the tables, but put it here in graph form, which you're going to see, and I'll walk through the same slide, this slide from left to right as well. So on the left side, you see the weekly recycling program in 2010, which were those yellow bins. It shows us at the time performing under industry best standards. The next section is the present-day biweekly operation, where we far exceed industry best standards for stops per crew. That's because, obviously, of the 315% increase from yellow bins to blue carts without any additional resources. And like I mentioned, we're relying, or overly reliant on help crews in order to complete the service levels for those days. The third column, this is your fiscal year 24 recommended budget of adding the 10 new crews. We believe this obviously will reduce the help crews, the overtime, and staff fatigue. And then finally, the right, the far right side of your chart, that is the implementation of weekly recycling for the blue carts. This is going to be the first quarter of 2024. It's pending the ordering and arrival of those new trucks, but what it does as well is significantly reduces the stops per crew and gets us much closer to industry best standards. I want to again thank Mayor Scott and his administration, city leadership, and our partner agencies like DHR, DOF, DGS, and many others that worked with DPW for several weeks earlier this year as we evaluated these different options and scenarios and developed these recommendations. This was a team effort, and we also want to acknowledge our Bureau of Solid Waste Management team that worked with us throughout that entire process. They helped paint the picture of what the day-to-day realities were like out there for our crews in the field, and then coming up as well with these overall recommendations on how we get back to weekly recycling. This next slide right here is just a status update of the vehicles that have been purchased through DGS. Our colleagues in DGS have placed multiple orders to secure 98 new trucks for routine services. And the main item I want to stress here on the screen for you is there in the middle of the screen. It is those 30 trucks that are arriving in Q1 of 2024. Through DGS's contacts in the industry, they were able to reserve build slots for those trucks as we worked out our funding mechanism. That's the newest order that you see there on your screen, and without that order, we do not get back to weekly recycling in the first part of 2024. That's because we have an aging fleet, and we have previously shared with the council on average each day, we operate with about 50 to 60 trucks total out of our 100 truck fleet. So we need the council's support. In addition to the crews funded through this budget, we need those 30 trucks to arrive in early 2024 to make this happen. As we get closer and have a specific date set, we will be sharing that information with the council and the public for full awareness. I just wanted to thank everybody. I knew that took up a little bit of time, but I think it was important to walk that through so everybody can understand the real challenges that we are facing, and then the plan as far as how we get back to weekly recycling in the first quarter of 2024. Next, I'm going to move through our service area, starting with our Bureau of Solid Waste. This is, we are going to highlight a few of the noteworthy items for each of the slides moving forward. Our Bureau of Solid Waste is mainly supported by the city's general fund, and the services you see on the screen are 100% supported by the general fund. This is our administrative arm for the Bureau of Solid Waste with a $3.3 million budget for fiscal year '24. And as part of the recommended budget, we are proposing two new positions, which are Operation Specialist I classifications. And those two positions are going to help us manage all of the CIP funding and investments that are made within Solid Waste through this budget. We need that staff in order to manage those contracts and manage that work. Moving next to the Public Right-Away Cleaning, which includes street and alley operations, mechanical sweeping operations, cleaning of business districts, marine operations, and graffiti removal. The service area has a $26.3 million budget, and there are no proposed new positions in these areas. This service is mostly supported by the general fund, but also includes some special funds, like the one you see there on the screen. I did want to take a moment here as well to highlight the work that our graffiti abatement team is currently performing. As part of the Mayor's Spring Services Blitz, our graffiti abatement crew is just a few days away from achieving its goal of removing 900 graffiti markings within that 90-day period. So I just wanted to say excellent work to the team for stepping up and to meet that Our next service is the vacant and abandoned property cleaning and boarding. This has a $13 million budget, with the majority of that within the general fund. And then there's a small portion of this budget, about $1 million, tied to CDBG funding. No proposed changes or staffing levels on this area, in the service area. This is the area where we spent the majority of the presentation thus far, waste removal and recycling. Like I mentioned, this recommended budget provides the creation of 10 additional crews that are going to be half-funded by the general fund. We also include the recommended budget for uniforms and safety shoes for staff, and then as well as some AVL equipment that's going to be critical for us in studying our routes and determining how we move more to be more efficiently in operating our routes. Of the 10 crews, I just wanted to break that down for you on this slide. That's 10 solid waste drivers, 2 solid waste workers, sorry, I'll start again. 10 solid waste drivers, 20 solid waste workers, 2 solid waste supervisors, and 2 office-support specialists. So by increasing the number of crews, you also have to increase the staffing levels to support that, which is on the supervision and administrative side. And overall, this budget is at $41.2 million for the upcoming fiscal year. Moving next to Waste Reuse and Disposal. This is a $29.8 million budget, and this area of the budget is tasked with maintaining the city's landfill and Northwest Transfer Station. The positions within the service are all general-funded as part of the budget, and we are requesting one additional staff person to serve as a cashier supervisor over at the landfill. That position is important as it helps us achieve our goals of training staff to do visual inspections and prevent unacceptable waste from entering the landfill, as well as help reduce overall wait times and better cash management practices. As noted on the screen, the landfill tipping fees will increase by 4% in the new year to account for inflationary cost increases. And I do want to take this opportunity as well to say that our work on the Quarantine Road Landfill Expansion Project continues to progress forward. Currently, there are several activities occurring simultaneously to address design, permitting, compliance, and construction of the project. The road construction is scheduled to start next year in June of '24, and then construction of the new landfill space would start thereafter. That was Bureau of Solid Waste. Now we're actually, now we're going to move over to the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, which is responsible for delivering water to nearly 2 million people in the region, processing our wastewater at our treatment plants, and maintaining our infrastructure. In order to provide these services, we charge our customers through regular water bills. And like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the new rates are some of the lowest we've seen in the past two decades. So what do the rates look like for the upcoming fiscal year? It's a 3% increase for water, 3.5% increase for wastewater, and 3% increase for stormwater. On the screen in front of you is the administration section for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, with the fiscal year 24 budget of $63.2 million, and the budget for the service area is increasing by $9.6 million due to increases in consulting costs and higher prices for commodities. Next is our Water Management Group, and this team is directly responsible for operating our water distribution system. The recommended budget for the service area is $88.7 million. There is a slight decrease year-to-year for the service due to assumed savings from vacant positions. I do want to mention that in total, the Bureau of Water and Wastewater has a 28% vacancy rate, which is right now at 534 total vacancies. However, over half of those total vacancies are actually currently in active recruitment phases. With improvements on the recruitment efforts in the class and compensation study that's going to be implemented in the new fiscal year, we can expect to see more staff onboard into this group. Our next service area is the team responsible for our timely and accurate meter readings, as well as water billing for over 400,000 accounts in both the city and the county. Like we talked about at the beginning of the presentation, this team has made some of the most tremendous improvements over the previous year, and they continue to find ways to improve operations and gain better efficiencies. One new initiative we look forward to launching in fiscal year '24 is a team of dedicated account representatives that will be the primary points of contact for our larger commercial accounts. This team will help us in achieving the high customer service goals and expectations we have for this best-in-class agency. And additionally, they'll help us maximize our revenue, which in turn can lead to minimizing rate impacts for our customers in future years. As shown on the screen, our Customer Advocacy Group is also presented and reflected as a new activity for better tracking within this area. And in total, this area has a $27.8 million budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Moving next to our wastewater management service area. This is the group that manages our two wastewater treatment plants over at Back River and Patapsco. This service area has the largest increase year-to-year within DPW, and it's at an $18.6 million increase. The majority of that, about $10 million. The majority of that, about $10 million, is for a new contract for managing our bio-solids processing over at Back River, and we also have about $5 million to increase project management for consultant work, and another $3.2 million for new positions. In terms of staffing, this is the service area that sees the most activity within the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, as we are raising staffing levels to meet the proper operating and maintenance needs at the two wastewater treatment plants. Through our compliance and safety initiatives, these staffs, the staff will be critical in ensuring our wastewater treatment plants have the adequate people on hand to maintain compliance and work with our, work on our preventative maintenance efforts. Our surface water management group provides protection, enhancement, and restoration of the city's watershens. The recommended budget for this area is $24 million, which is actually a slight reduction from the previous year. The recommended funding includes the creation of a new position, however, that was offset by savings from other positions. We also increased funding for procuring city software used to better manage our capital This is the last service area within the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. This is our engineering construction management program. This area provides design, construction, and management of our assets and manages the capital improvement projects for us. The 196.1 million budget is a $3.2 million increase from the previous year, and it includes funding for two new positions to provide administrative support within our asset management division. The increase in the budget here on the screen in front of you is also due to inflationary costs for contractual supply and equipment spending. This is the last slide of our presentation. This is the administration budget for DPW. This is the overall administrative unit for the agency with a $10.8 million budget. As part of the recommended budget, DPW is presenting, proposing the creation of four new positions that you see there on the screen. These positions will support our fiscal unit and are comprised of a deputy CFO, an accounting manager, a grant specialist, and a procurement manager. These positions are needed to fully support the financial procurement activities of an agency the size of DPW, and it also helps us focus as we maximize our revenue and compete for various grants and federal monies that, that are out there. So these positions are critical for achieving those financial goals for the agency in the new year. Overall, even with the four proposed positions that are under the general fund, we actually reduced the total amount of general fund-supported positions within this service area. So in fiscal year '23, there were 74 positions supported by the general fund out of the DPW administration unit, and in fiscal year '24, we reduced that to 64. That is just the work that we did there earlier this year in preparing for this recommended budget, just making sure that we do everything we can to minimize impacts on the city's general fund. So with that, Chair Costello, I want to thank you for the time in presenting for the council on DPW's fiscal year '24 budget. We look forward to answering any questions you or the council may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to get started here in one moment. Colleagues, we're going to try something a little new this evening. We've been starting on this side throughout budget hearings. We are going to start on this side, but I'm going to ask the folks on this side to limit it to one question. I'm going to go over here to this side, ask these folks to limit it to two questions, and then we'll go two and two, back and forth, just because the folks that have been sitting on this side have, have had a little more time. The other thing I'm going to ask is just because there's 11 of us here this evening, to please keep your questions as succinct as humanly possible. We will reserve time at the end of the hearing for thank yous. I know there's a ton of incredible DPW staff here that frankly need to be individually thanked for the work that they and their staffs do every single day. So with that, Director and team, I want to touch on Service 660 Administration, as well as service, Solid Waste Administration, and Service 670, Water and Wastewater Administration. In solid waste, there's an increase in two positions for administration, and in water and wastewater, there's a reduction of 11 positions for administration. Could you walk us through what those changes are?
I can walk you through at least the first part on solid waste. So the two new positions, those Operation Specialist One positions and Service 660, those are going to be the two staff that are going to help us manage all of our capital project work within solid waste. So what you see in the CIP budget as well, is just, and through ARPA funding as well, is just a massive increase in, in money going towards our solid waste facilities to improve those locations, make staff enhancements as well, too. So you need the staff on hand to be able to manage contracts, to be able to do that work, as well as look at data and trends that, that, that team is going to be helping us work through as well as we move forward.
And that's for capacity of the facility as well as deferred maintenance of, on the HR side, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and let's jump to Service 670, Water and Wastewater. There's a reduction from 27 to 16 positions in administration?
So the, when you look at the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, the service areas, what we actually did this year is, is look and see where positions were best classified. So some of those positions actually moved from one service area to the other. We can, we can try to work to see if we can map that out as well to show the council those full changes, but overall, that's where the, those decreases are going to be reflected.
Is there a change in functionality, or it's, it's more of just a reclassification across services?
Reclassification to categorize them in the correct service area.
No further follow-up is necessary, then. Thank you. We are going to go Schleifer, Conway, Porter, Glover, Middleton. Schleifer, Conway, Porter, Glover, Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Mitchell, I continue to be concerned that we're now approaching two years since the agency has knowingly been violating city code and not picking up weekly curbside collection. Just yesterday, during the Capitol Budget Hearing, the Planning Director, Chris Ryer, said that DPW, and especially solid waste, is the one agency within the city that simply doesn't know what they need. Is that true?
Councilmember Schleifer, thank you for that question. As we mentioned in our presentation, we, we identify exactly what we need. We need 20 crews to be able to drive down our units per route. The reason why that is critical is, is number one. One crew can only do so much in a 10-hour day. Currently, as we mentioned, our crews are working on average 11.6-hour day, and I, I just want this team to understand what that means. And I think Councilmember Burnett, you understand because you were on back of one of our trucks and really worked. You're stopping at almost 2,000 units per day picking up trash and picking up recycling without an investment in the city trucks that have air conditioning, without an investment in facilities that doesn't have showers or lockers for our team, and they get up every day and do this work. We need those additional people, and, and we outlined that in our presentation. But we also need the new equipment and trucks, because it's very critical that we have that, and, and trucks that have air conditioning, so that our new crews can get into a place, especially as we go through the summer, when our, our staff have heat strokes and different things of that nature, because they don't have the proper equipment to do their job and do it safely. And so we're excited about those new 30 trucks that are coming. We're excited about the 20 staff that is needed, but more importantly, we're excited about the investment that is made by our administration in updating our facilities. As you heard from Chair Costello, is that there's a significant investment in city's fleet in the CIP, the city's facilities in the CIP, and there's a significant investment in ARPA dollars for our facilities. And we're talking about $25-plus million in just facilities alone, another $22-plus million in, in equipment. We have not only identified what we need, we also are preparing to figure out what we need five, 10 years from now. So as you heard from our Deputy Director, Richard Luna, we're planning now for how we're dealing with waste diversion. That is going to be critical. Even as we spend $90 million in our landfill, we have to think about what it looks like 40 years from now when we run out of space. So what we're doing now is looking at, how do we divert our, our trash? How do we reuse it so that that space can last for a decade, or a century instead of a few decades? And so we have already charged our planning department with the cost of, of understanding that and the cost of, of planning for that, and we have that money available. We also understand that we need an eastside transfer station. One transfer station alone, especially the size of the one we have, is not adequate. It's not adequate for a city this size, and especially when we want to expand a hauler program, especially we want to push people through so they don't have to dump around the corner. And so we're excited that not only the state of Maryland has invested in it, that we're looking to invest in it from a CIP, and if you look in our CIP budget, you will see that. So I, I would say that we have tried to our best within this budget and in this presentation to really clearly articulate that need, and we're excited that DPW solid waste is finally getting invested in. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that response, and I, I agree with you that the workers are working way too long hours, which is why I relentlessly advocate for the weekly curbside collections, because we all know that when we get back to weekly curbside collections, the workload on the workers will be significantly less than it is when they're picking up two weeks' worth. And thank you for providing that information, and I'll relay that information to Chris Ryer, because he must have missed it, but I'll make sure he gets that message that you guys do know what you need, and we'll continue to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Conway, and then Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a real simple question. Thank you, Director. Appreciate the work that Clean Corps is doing around the city. We're only in a couple of places. I noticed we, we don't have one in the 4th District. Are we considering expanding that program at all? Clean Corps? Yep.
From, from our standpoint, DPW plays a support role for Clean Corps, so that, that the department-
Director, I'm going to, I think that question's going to be best addressed to the Department of Planning.
Correct.
CAO Leach, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we're good. Clean Corps question about expansion, we're going to defer that to Department of Planning, if, if that's all right.
That's totally fine, yeah.
Throw another question in your queue for that.
Sure. My other question, a couple of, a bunch of constituents in my district have not been getting their streets swept. We, you know, frequently get complaints about folks that haven't had their streets swept in a while. I'm curious about what's going on there and how we're handling instances where streets are not swept. I know sometimes cars are parked, or other problems may be the reason why that doesn't happen, but do you have any sense on what's going on there for street sweeping?
So I'll take it, and if I miss anything, Bureau Chief, Yvonne Moore Jackson, will definitely jump in.
Director, I hate to interrupt again. Throughout budget hearings, most time I have to complain to people to tell them to get closer to the mic.
Yep.
If you, yep, just an inch or two off. Yes, sir. Thank you. Just so the folks at home can hear us.
All right, so get away from the mic, if you will. All right, perfect. I feel like if I don't hear myself, I'm not talking loud enough, so my apologies. To answer your question, we have significantly, as you know, rolled out our, our, our full street sweeping program, whether that's our quadrant sweepers, our, whether our major corridors. Where we see a problem is twofold. Number one, sometimes we may have a staffing shortage and a broom may not get out to a location and sweep. The other challenge that we have is when our brooms does get out, and especially sometimes within our quadrant, to your point, there may be parked cars, and, and it's hard to get to the curbside. And so we, we are faced with that challenges. What we're trying to do to mitigate that, again, is hire more drivers, but, you know, and, and really educate the public on when they're street sweeping in so that they know to move the car so that we can get to the curbside. So those are two major drivers in missing it, and we, we're, we're trying to mitigate the first by continuing to hire, hire more staff.
I appreciate the staff piece. I'm, I'm curious from the enforcement piece, for folks who don't move their cars, do we ticket? Do we warn? Do we do anything to further make sure that folks move their vehicles?
So, so that one's going to be a DOT question. I don't want to belabor too much time on this. If, if you have something to offer that's tangible, otherwise, go ahead, Chief.
So in general, the enforcement is on gateways and posted routes, so if the street does not have a posted no parking sign or street, street sweeping cleaning, then there's no enforcement.
Got it. And we don't relay otherwise to DOT? There's no communication necessarily to DOT otherwise, is?
So in the, in the areas where enforced, where signs are posted, that's where DOT sends their enforcement officers out. So they know if, if we are unable to complete a route, or then we notify them early that morning so that they don't go to that area and enforce, issue citations. But in general, it, it has to be posted with a sign in order for citations to be issued.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, then Councilman Glover.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question about the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan, particularly the composting facility. I'm super excited that you all, the Zero Waste Manager, you are doing an amazing job. I'm glad you're on the team. However, I am concerned that we are three years in, into a 10-year plan, and it still seems like we are chasing a lot of those zero-waste metrics that the community, obviously, mostly my communities, have been working with the department on. Can you speak to the status of that composting facility and the remaining amount of funds that we need to generate? Thank you.
So I'll just give a general response, and if you need more details, I'll have Sophia to come up. But we do have our compost pilot at all of the convenience centers, all of the drop-off centers. We have composting at the farmer's markets, and, and we also work with the Office of Sustainability to, for composting workshops and our growth centers and things like that. Part of the eastside transfer station includes a composting facility, so we, we're still going through the process of working with that to get the eastside transfer station designed phase, but part of that design is going to be a composting facility.
Thank you. But more importantly, I'm, I'm really talking about the standalone composting facility that is related in the plan that the community has been working on, that, you know, we have a, I think, outstanding EPA grant to generate those funds for that standalone composting facility. Do we have a status update on where we are in that, that phase, phase one development, and how many? And if you can press the button again. Yep. It'll turn red.
So we have not heard back from the EPA, EPA yet on those grants. We have requested funding specifically for a composting facility to be co-located with the eastside transfer station. What the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan calls for is four decentralized composting facilities that have a capacity of approximately 20,000 tons per year each. One of the challenges that we face is finding a central location that could facilitate that same quantity of food waste diversion at one place. So the, the decentralized facility is what we're exploring right now, but regional partnerships is also something that we're looking to explore to see if some of the surrounding counties may have access to land where we could build a facility that suits regional needs.
Okay. I appreciate that response. Was that communicated, was that communicated to the community when you all first started this project?
In terms of the EPA grant?
No. So in terms of, so this, this is a new, new development about the composting facility being attached to the transfer station in East Baltimore. My question is, was that communicated to the community when you first started this project? And I know that was before your time, and so anybody have that historical account?
So I believe that actually, the idea of co-locating the composting facility came up through with the EPA grant opportunity, and I was in communication with community leaders in South Baltimore at that time and had several planning meetings with them to discuss the opportunity.
Okay, because I believe they were under the impression that it was, I believe, 10 acres that are located in South Baltimore that the- located in South Baltimore that the standalone composting facility was to be used on. And so, that's why I'm a little bit confused. And this is, you know, I'm a little bit confused about the connection to that East Baltimore Transfer Station.
Sure. So, as part of the transfer station development process, DPW underwent a capably unfill assessment process with an engineering firm to determine which sites would be most feasible for development. Through that process, unfortunately, only two of the four landfill, capped landfills that were assessed made it through to like the okay for development process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover, then Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, where are we? I know we had conversations about like two years ago in reference to a transfer station over East Baltimore with Baltimore Recycling Company. My question is, where are we with that conversation at the moment?
Councilmember Glover, can you repeat that question one more time?
So, we had conversations about two years ago. We also had it last year in reference to the Baltimore Recycling Company about how they could play a part in getting the debris from those east side locations as opposed to having our vehicles drive down to like Quantine Road or maybe over to Northwest Transfer Station or maybe down to Bresco. So, I'm asking, are we still in conversations with Baltimore Recycling Company in reference to picking up our reference?
Okay. So, I do recall this, the Baltimore Recycling Facility, and they have, they still, they haven't gotten their permit to accept waste and recycling from the city. And they have to get that from MDE before we can even talk about working with them.
So, from understanding, talking to the owner of the company, I was told that they had all their permits and they were ready to go. They were waiting on DPW to have that conversation with them again. And you're saying they haven't, they don't have the permits available?
The last time we spoke to them, they didn't have it. But if he has it now, we can reach out to him and get it going again, see how we can work together.
Okay. And the question also is, where exactly do the funds that we are getting from the transfer station and down from Quantine Road, where do those funds go? Is it like a general fund or are they going back into the budget of DPW? Where are those monies going?
Councilmember Glover, the funds, the tipping fees are, the funds associated with, those are going to the general purpose fund.
Are there any times that the agency reach out to the administration to seek any of those funds? Because to me, it's like you creating your own revenue. I mean, they're dumping at our facilities. It's DPW workers that are taking care of the properties. It seems as if that we should be getting monies in reference to DPW in order for us to operate fully.
I can take that, Councilman. When, in regards to that typical, in regards to that question, in some, you know, across city services, we have some services in the general fund that by nature of the type of work they do, they have a revenue generating component. And we have many other services within the general fund that don't generate any revenue just by virtue of the service that's provided. And so, we certainly work with the agency to make sure that we are aligning the expenditures and the service delivery model in a way that maximizes revenue. But we, I guess, from a perspective of sort of maintaining flexibility in the general fund, we wouldn't necessarily want to restrict those for a specific service because, again, we want to sort of make sure that we're maintaining flexibility in the overall fund.
The reason why I'm asking because, you know, when it comes to like budget hearings, you guys are asking for more money. And I see that you guys also generate money through, you know, folks coming to dump at the transfer stations and down at Quantine Road. So, again, it's just disturbing to me that, you know, DPW isn't getting money from individuals that are, you know, giving money to those services.
Certainly. And again, I think that, you know, in terms of the revenue that's generated from that particular activity, in terms of the overall general fund revenue that goes into DPW's budget to support their overall services, it's a much higher number. Again, I think that, like I said, and this came up this morning in the Finance Department hearing, that we do definitely work with agencies where there are services that have a revenue generating component to make sure that, you know, those services are able to maximize what it is that they're generating. But again, we have to make sure, you know, when it comes to the general fund, our goal is to make sure that we're maintaining flexibility with those resources to make sure that policymakers can allocate those dollars based off of priorities.
Throughout the year, can you give me a guesstimate of how much we generate funds in reference to those transfer stations?
I'm looking for that, oh, do you have that number ready? I'm looking for that number. I don't have it right at this moment, but I can, I can take that as a follow-up and get that for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Vice President Middleton, and then Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Director Moore, I just want to thank you and your team. We can all just thank you over and over for the work that you continue, Mitchell, I'm sorry, for the work that you can, it's evening, for the work that you, your team continues to do. I mean, it's, you handle a lot of public service work that all of us really are involved in. And the constituency, they come to us first for the needs. And for that, I want to fall into the question. Before you came on, I was heavily involved with the advocates for the Water Accountability Act, which, thank you again, I mean, that took some time to really put together and work with the advocates. And it was just a show of what it takes when you partner with people that, you know, outside people that work with that constituency every day and using their ideas to help create that Water For All program with your guidance. And my question is, how, you know, we're still having, we're still getting constituents that are still complaining about the water bills and the fees, the fees, the fees. And they just don't understand how, why all of that lump sum at the end of the day is more than the actual water. They're, they still just don't understand. And we still are getting complaints and they're still crying, "Help the people, help the people," to us. And I guess I want to ask how much, you know, I know you have a program set up. I know you have ideas on the way residents can get credits and they have to take time to do those volunteer things. How much additional money do you think you would need to really get that program and get, you know, it takes strong outreach for something like this. And I don't think, you know, we're going to go backwards where, you know, our water bills were almost, you know, nothing. It's just a big, it's a big problem, especially with our older adults. Can you give us an update on that? And just if there is some additional funds that you think you need to help really push that program? I know it's, you have a shortage of workers to maybe keep tracking the credits and so on. Talk about this for me.
Vice President, I can start there. And if I miss anything, Director Mitchell can also jump in. I think one of the things we recognize with our customer service team is being proactive and getting information out to our customers, right? And so, when we launched Promise Pay back earlier in the year, we send the information and data over to those partners with us. And they're looking at the information and then they're being proactive as well, too, and reaching out to customers and letting them know, "You may qualify for Water For All. You may qualify for LIWAP assistance." And so, there's that extra layer of communication, and it's through that partnership that we have so that we can maximize as much of the money coming in, but then also for our customers can maximize the money that's available to them. Like I mentioned in the presentation as well, too, there was a $20 million that was called out by the Governor's Office to help people pay off past water bill debt here in Maryland. We got 15.8 million of the 20 million that was available to the entire state, by far the largest amount for any jurisdiction. So, we're actually working right now with the state to go through the eligibility requirements to see who's going to be able to qualify so that they can get their water bills paid off, whatever past debt they incurred during that pandemic period. They'll be actually able to get that amount absolved from their bills. So, we should be getting the funds within the next few weeks, and then we have about 90 days to go and implement that program. Customers will receive a letter letting them know that they qualified, how much is going to get reduced from their bill. And then it'll also include information on other types of programs or services that are available to them so that they can take advantage of Water For All, which has given out over $2 million so far to our residents, and any other programs and assistance that are available to them like LIWAP.
Thank you for that information. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a quick shout-out to Marsha Collins that she's the one that keeps the council communicated on with, you know, a number of initiatives that are, and this is one of them. So, this added information is good news. Thank you.
Lots of shout-outs for Marsha Collins. Councilman Torrance, then Councilwoman Ramos.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Because I always have mic problems. So, Director, I want to draw your attention to Service 675. You know this was coming. This is related to your resident inspectors on water projects. I reviewed the inspection reports for two of my projects. And I can tell you from looking at it, I need assurances of how we can do quality assurances on our inspectors and actually visiting the sites daily. I saw, and I count, 27 instances where an inspector did not visit a site. So, I want to know what the agency is going to do to ensure that inspectors are driving the sites and physically seeing them daily.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. I'm going to defer the answer to that to Chief Wolf, who will provide a response.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I did get some feedback on that. First and foremost, what I wanted to mention is we do have a 236-page construction management SOP, standard operating procedures, that all our inspectors get trained on. I did hear about some jobs, especially at the end of the day, they weren't always tightened up with the proper closure or traffic control devices or even construction equipment. So, what I did is I got together with our team and I said, "We need to do a kind of reset and do further SOB training on proper inspection and reporting." Because we do IDRs every day, inspection daily reports that are in our project control file for every project that we loaded in the CM14. So, we do document. I want more pictures, more, you know, evidence of the sites at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day. So, I did have a meeting with our team specifically on that about three weeks ago. And so, we're continuing to improve that effort.
So, with that being said, Ms. Marguerite, I would like a committee request for the project that is in Hampden and Ashburton related to those actual inspections. I actually reviewed the 900-page inspection reports that were downloaded from your actual system and given to me, and I counted 27 instances on one project alone. So, I would like to see the current training for both inspectors as well as their current training reports. Again, because I should not have to reach out to DOT to then do stop work orders on projects that are planned, paid for by the citizens of Baltimore.
Okay. We can give you the information that you need.
Related to that, in addition to that, I would like to understand as well-
Councilman, hang on one second. Can you clarify that request, make sure we capture that correctly?
Yes. So, I would like to see the inspection reports from April 30th to now for both projects.
Do you have the two water contract numbers?
We'll figure it out together, but I'll email them to you. Both projects. In addition to that, the traffic mitigation plans as well because they did cause significant traffic delays. In addition to that, I'm going to add as well as the damage to citizens' property that was done because of the projects. So, I want to know where we are in terms of the claims processes for claims submitted to persons related to both water projects. And then whether or not the agency's covering it or the actual vendor is covering it. And then I'll give you a deadline.
Pardon me?
I'll give you a deadline for it. Next Friday.
DPW, can you meet that deadline?
Next Friday. Have all those IDRs from, you're saying, from April 30th till today. I think you're talking about 1252, WC 1252 over in the Ashburton area. And I forget the other projects. So, I can get all those IDRs to you by next Friday.
Thank you.
Great. And Councilman, I think you did mention claims as well, too. We'd have to work with the city's law department to pull that information.
And before we move on, I assume that the department's going to coordinate directly with the law department instead of forcing citizens to go through the law department's claim process on their own, correct?
Correct.
So, the department will be proactive in reaching out to folks?
Correct.
Based on the damage reports, correct?
Correct.
Outstanding. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
I have one more question.
Oh, we're doing, we're doing one question, but we're snaking back. It's like a fantasy baseball draft. Trust me, it works. It works. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to Water For All, we have complaints about the fact that the discount is applied once a year rather than throughout, you know, once a month as residents were used to. And the program is under-enrolled. I mean, the goal was 6% of our users and of our customers, and it's only at 1%. Can you talk about like how we're doing and implementing that and why? Now, Mr. Cox, who's the person doing the work, has been excellent. He's been very responsive. He's only one person, so we, there's probably a capacity issue there. But my residents really need the discount every month and not just once a year. And so, can you talk a little bit about, now, I will say that Mr. Cox said, "Well, the resident chose it for once a year." That's not true. So, we've just got to make sure to figure out how the resident, if they're supposed to choose monthly, that they choose monthly, but actually it should just be a default that they should get the discount monthly.
I could take that question, Councilwoman. So, homeowners receive the one-time annual credit, and then the tenants have the option to receive it either one time or be applied month-to-month dispersment. We can look into that one specific case and figure out what happened there?
Oh, no. It's not one specific case. It is every single constituent that has come to us about Water For All. It is supposed to be applied monthly. If that is a change in the law that we need to make, then let's do that. But it has to be applied monthly.
So, we'll work with our team as far as implementing that to ensure that that's happening, especially of those that are opting in for the one year versus the monthly payments. We do fund six positions over in MLCFS for Water For All support. And then our last check in terms of talking with the staff over there was that they were recruiting, that they were recruiting to fill those positions. But we do fund six positions for them.
Right. But I don't think that all of them are filled.
That's the information I got from their office, which is that they were recruiting.
Yeah, I just think that we need to make sure that that discount is shown monthly. So, if someone can get back to us as to whether or not that's a legislative fix that we need to make, I don't think it is in my reading of the law. It should just be something that the department can fix.
We can look into that, yeah, and we can get back to you as well as a follow-up.
Can we, can we get that information by call business this Friday in terms of illegal determination and if you need to work with someone from the law department on that?
We can give you an- We can give you an update. We can look into it and give you an update before Friday, and then if we need an extra few days to get a full response back to you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Burnett, then Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to try and get some, an update. Recently, the EPA ordered Baltimore City to complete two of the five remaining underwater storage water projects at Drewitt Lake and Lake Ashburton. Obviously, there was a letter sent back trying to extend that deadline. Can you just kind of give us a clear picture on where that situation currently stands and our ability to meet that deadline?
No, thank you. Our general, I know that now it's a legal matter. Our general counsel, Darlene, Darrell Ingram, will answer that.
Thank you for that question, Councilman. As Director Mitchell indicated, this is now with, in discussions with EPA, we have a conference actually tomorrow morning to discuss that, to determine next steps, but the agency is still committed to meet the deadlines, and we will have more to discuss after our hearing tomorrow. There's a request to modify that order that you referenced today, and we'll be discussing the semantics and the legality of it starting tomorrow.
Well, is a agency request, Mr. Chair, could we get, I guess, a response in writing for the committee after your meeting, or when, I guess, when you're able to provide one? I don't know. Mr. Chair, how long you think something like that should be?
I would say, Councilmember Burnett, there's three mitigating factors on that, those projects. As you know, we had to underground five reservoirs, with the two remaining being Ashburton and Drewitt. There's three mitigating factors that Darrell Ingram will be working on, and Darrell, excuse me if I may be talking out of place, but, you know, these projects went through three major things that was definitely uncontrollable for DPW. Number one, COVID, a pandemic. Number two, we went through one of the worst supply chain shortages in American history. And number three, we had unforeseen site conditions. And so as we continue to discuss those things with EPA, we'll report back when we can find it. But again, Darrell Ingram and his team is working with EPA on the path forward.
What's a reasonable timeframe for the councilman's request?
That's a very interesting question. We know litigation in these type of matters can be resolved tomorrow, or it may, depending on the discussions, may take longer. I really can't speculate as to how this will be resolved. Hopefully, it's resolved and we able to move forward, but the city is still committed to...
Hopefully it's resolved. I'm sorry, sir. You said hopefully resolved by when?
The legality of the order, however, the city is still committed to the deadlines as was indicated in its letter, as well as in media and/or statements made by the department.
Councilman, do you want updates on a certain frequency until you can get a final answer?
I mean, would quarterly be reasonable? I mean, given the potential lengthy nature?
Quarterly reasonable?
Yes, sir.
So can we get our first update, Councilman, is June 30th acceptable, and then end of each quarter moving forward until finality is reached?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is this an absolute... Yep, absolute direct follow-up, right? Quick?
I just want to make sure he gets access to the same briefings I get as well, monthly, about the projects with our project managers, so he understands the depth of...
Yes, sir.
Oh, everyone else can have it. Just make sure that they get it.
All right. Councilman Dorsey, and then Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As it turns out, unrelated to this hearing, I was asking about the origins of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development yesterday, and I was forwarded 1987 article from the Baltimore Sun that touches on something that's of interest and relevant to a couple of the questions that have been asked, and what I want to ask about here, I'm going to just read this one paragraph. It relates to things that William Donald Schaefer did on his way out the door and things that Kurt Schmoke did in his first days in office. Notably, one of the last things that Schaefer did in office was separate transportation from public works. And I think this is really relevant and important. Mr. Schaefer's other 1984 creation was a Department of Transportation where none had existed, taking in parking, traffic, and transit, and anything that moved. And then Schmoke undid this and separated them again. He said, this made sense in theory, but worked only because the executives in the departments of Public Works and Transportation already knew how to work together. The first transportation director, Richard Traynor, had been deputy Public Works director. George Petricakis became simultaneously highways chief in the Department of Public Works and deputy director of the Department of Transportation until he then succeeded the first-ever transportation director. These two departments were very, very intertwined, and one of the things that I get the most complaints about as it relates to roadworks projects is, and something that I spend personally a lot of time trying to follow up on, case by case by case, there were countless of these in my district, is where emergency work is done by DPW and never doubled back on for restoration of previously existing conditions. This is in sidewalks that sit unrepaired for years after a water meter, broken lines have been repaired, asphalt where jagged, misshapen patches that are lumpy get put in and never get repaired, and concrete streets, which we have in abundance in northeast Baltimore, that get repaired not with concrete, which is not an in-kind, not a replacement of previous conditions, get replaced with crappy asphalt. And I can tell you for one, the one concrete street in my district that I have asked to have resurfaced year after year, Swansea Road, where I have the highest rate of requests for resurfacing, I can't get it done because it's concrete, and I traveled down it just a couple of days ago, and the overwhelming need for resurfacing there is because of DPW projects that were never restored. And so what I'm looking for is a way to get these kind of things done in the backlog effectively, and to know what the department needs in order to better do this, because I know that it happens when we have planned, contracted projects, but it's a real problem when it's the, when it's emergency work, which makes up a huge portion of what happens in the road.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey. Our Chief Wolf will answer and really speak to the partnership that we have with DOT, the partnership that we're commencing, but also, you know, some of the challenges around that. So Chief Wolf will answer that question.
Yes. Good evening, Councilman Dorsey and panel. Yeah, I mean, I understand that is a key issue, and one thing we've done to improve coordination, as you mentioned, we meet bi-weekly with DOT. Every two weeks, like 40 people between DOT and DPW to coordinate projects, issues, holdups, and as far as restoration work. We do understand, in some cases, on emergency work, they'll go in and repair, and it's temporary, and then they come back and get a final repair. In some cases, our contract capacity got exhausted, and we're waiting for a procurement of new work so we can do that final restoration, be it concrete. But we always match existing conditions. That's the approach, and we have improved by having those bi-weekly DOT/DPW meetings. And frankly, we just had a meeting with DOT, and they expressed need of some assistance, so we're offering to potentially work with them and provide some assistance in reviewing MOT plans to help, you know, get permits out on the street as well. So there's definitely a better effort in coordinating with DPW and DOT. We realize that's very critical.
And so do these meetings include a comprehensive and complete review of every emergency work that has happened in those previous two weeks? Every sidewalk that's been disrupted, every street surface that's been disrupted?
I mean, I know they're in constant contact with the inspectors from DOT in the field with our inspectors, if there's issues with repairs or things aren't up to standard, but in the meetings...
I don't see DOT inspectors out in the field every time I go out and I see a DPW emergency repair taking place. I don't think that that's happening.
But I'm saying the follow-up, if there's issues with road repairs, you know, I'm saying we do work with DOT, and, but in these meetings, I can't say that we talk about every single issue, but if there's issues, we work closer together with DOT, and that's why, like I said, having these bi-weekly meetings allows us to elevate issues of, you know, major concerns.
I just think that it's never making it to that place where the crew is walking away from the roadworks, from the repair, and nothing else is ever happening again other than the temporary patch.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think what you're mentioning is when we have a water main break, or we had to fix a meter, or we have to replace a hydrant because it was hit, and we're doing emergency work to quick-fix it, and we're doing a temporary repair. What you're referencing is that the more permanent repair is not happening quick enough or is not happening at all. And what we'll do is we'll respond back to this body, number one, to make sure that we have our process together, to make sure that it's going to the end. In many cases, it's going through our crews, internal crews, our contractors to do some of that immediate work. It doesn't look like that's happening. What we'll do is we'll report back, you know, how many repairs that we have had over the last year, and which ones were mitigated or not, and be able to get that information. But more importantly, making sure that our processes are tight enough so that we don't have these issues going forward, and I think that's the core of what you're asking.
I appreciate that, because I mean, I sent eight or nine over to TIE last week, and that's because I would feel like I was asking too much if I actually went around my district and identified all, let's conservatively estimate, 130 locations around my district that I could send over next week if I wanted to. I don't want to be asking, begging of DPW for that level of thing, but I will ask the DPW, go out and look at Swansea Road and tell me that that street shouldn't be completely resurfaced by DPW because of the intense concentration and volume of road cuts that have been made and never properly restored on Swansea Road by DPW. Look, I understand, like, it's, DPW's always getting hit with, like, random ones here or there. It's a lot of them over time, but it, you know, we got to get it fixed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we go to Councilman Cohen, I've asked this a couple times over the past few months, and I don't know that I've gotten a clear answer. Who's the main point of contact when WWW UMD comes in and makes a repair? Who's responsible for the permanent restoration? Who's the point of contact in the agency that we should reach out to when restoration has not been completed within a reasonable timeframe?
That could be me, because we actually do the permanent restoration work for all our, you know, emergency responses, so if I can be the point of contact.
What's the appropriate timeframe before we reach out to you, Mr. Wolf?
My phone's on 24 hours a day, so, but I'm saying, I'm, you know, I'm at the office 10 hours a day.
No, no, no. I apologize for interrupting. I'm asking the question the wrong way. If you fix a water main break, if UMD fixes, Mr. Patrick's crew fixes a water main break on North Holiday Street tonight, what is the appropriate timeframe that final restoration should occur? So I'm not going to bother you tomorrow morning about it.
Well, let me get an answer instead of, I mean, it goes right into the bucket to get final restoration, but let me get you an answer so I can give you better numbers, but it's truly something that's stressed fairly quickly.
And Chair, there's a few answers that we will provide. You and this committee, number one, the restoration during times like this when we have good weather, but we also will provide times for when it's, you know, it's very cold, it's rainy, it's snowing, that when the temperature goes too low, we're not able to provide that permanent restoration, as you know. So we'll provide you timelines for when it's seasonal time to do concrete and asphalt work and when it's non-seasonal.
Perfect. So let me modify the request there. Nina and Nate, get a written narrative by call business this Friday, which outlines what the policy is, you can account for cold season versus non-cold season, and the extent to which you're complying with DOT's street cuts policy, because that is the law of the land in the public rate of way. And we'd like to have that by call business on Friday, and Chief Wolf, if you can include your contact information in there as the main point for us to reach out to if X number of days have passed since the repair and final restoration has not yet occurred. Is that reasonable?
I'm actually keynote speaker at a conference tomorrow, so Friday's going to be a push. I'd rather, you know, push it into next week to get...
Call a business Monday? June 6th? June 5th?
June 5th. 6th, what's that? Is that Tuesday, June 6th?
The 5th is Monday. Tuesday's the 6th.
Could we do the 6th? June 6th?
Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Mitchell, and to your team as well. I'm deeply concerned about the safety of our DPW workers. We learned recently in a report that Cub put out, just a very large volume of safety concerns, and it's also come to my attention that since 2020, I believe the agency has had over 70 OSHA violations. At a good exchange yesterday with the city administrator and a commitment to really work on that issue, but given that the majority of the violations and the safety concerns are coming out of DPW, I was hoping to know what, in this budget, you all have asked for to address the safety concerns, and I mean everything from trench boxes not being used appropriately or not even being available to workers. We already talked about the conditions on the backs of our trucks, lack of air conditioning. I mean, we literally had, as you know, an employee die on the back of a truck during the COVID epidemic, and I think delivering effective services is critical, but we can't do it if our own workers aren't safe and aren't well. So within this budget, was hoping to understand how we are thinking about improving the safety of the Department of Public Works staff.
No, thank you. I first want to say, I'm not familiar with someone passing away on back of our truck, but again, that might have happened before my time here in Baltimore City. What I can say is you make an excellent point. When we talk about our fleets and not having air conditioning, that is a safety concern, especially when degrees get up to 100 degree. That is a historical disinvestment in DPW that we talked about earlier, when you mentioning that our facilities hasn't been upgraded, that we don't have proper facilities. That is a historic disinvestment that must be made for these facilities, not just DPW, but all facilities to meet proper ocean violations, but also creating an environment where people want to come into these facilities and work. And so what you see in this budget is a significant investment in fleet. As you see, we're purchasing nearly 100 vehicles total, I think 98, in solid waste alone, so that we can get adequate equipment so that they can do their work properly. We're investing in our water and wastewater, tens of millions of dollars, and in our solid waste, over 25 million in facility improvements alone. These aren't small fixes. These are lack of disinvestment that we have to make major capital investments to the facility, and we're doing that. Last but not least, what we have done in DPW, and what you see in our budget, is a significant investment in our Office of Safety that Mr. Ingram can talk about a little bit more. Over the last year and a half, we invested in two critical divisions within the Department of Public Works. Number one, a compliance division. One of the reasons why is... of Public Works. Number one, a compliance division. One of the reasons why is this was the outcome of some of the challenges that we faced at our wastewater treatment plant, historical challenges. And so our goal is, as an agency, is for us to be proactive in that compliance, and our folks to walk those plants, see those issues, and fix it. That's in addition to our safety division, where their job is to walk all 100-plus facilities that DB, DPW has, and begin to do all the things to mitigate and fix it. So from a Department of Public Works standpoint, we created that division. We also have a vendor right now walking our sites, doing safety inspections at each site. And we're working internally with DPW and DGS for when they find things that are a safety asset, that we fix immediately, whether through internal staff or through our contractual support. But DPW and the city is taking any safety issues very serious. We consider ourselves, we must be a safety first, not only department, but city. And that's what we have committed our resources to do it, our time and energy to do it. And, and we are proud to say that from our standpoint, when we were looking at some of our numbers, we see less accidents that are preventative. We're looking at fixing and mitigating those issues a lot swifter. And that's because we have created and is creating a proactive strategy to deal with safety at our, at our facilities. And, and I can turn it all over to Darno Ingram to go a little bit more into our, our safety division. And I think very soon, our safety manager is starting here very shortly, and he can give a little update on that as well.
Again, good evening, Council and my councilmen. To answer your question, part of my role as chief compliance officer is to manage all compliance activities, and one of that is, is safety. And I'm, I'm happy to say, part of our safety strategy is, one, we develop an environment regulatory safety division, and part of it's a two-component. One is environmental regulatory compliance, and the second is safety. And that's managed by our, a, a great recruit we got from M.D., Andrea Bowie. And she did a very extensive search, and I'm happy to say that we recruited and hired a safety manager from the federal government. And that person's task is to develop a safety program, a strategic safety program, to address the concerns that you are, that you highlighted today. And just to give a highlight of what this program will entail. First, we've requested a budget for safety liaisons and inspectors, to which I'm working with the DPW administration to recruit and hire, to report to that safety manager. His task will be to develop a program that's approved by this administration to ensure that it's compliant with OSHA standards and most, our, our state regulator as it relates to safety. And secondly, thirdly, what we'll be doing programmatically is changing culture, which will be, one, pop-up inspections of safety, from construction to UMD, to our facilities. We will be inspecting every facility. And we started those inspections last week with one of our consultants, two weeks ago, actually, with one of our consultants to highlight issues, to then give action plans and corrective actions to our colla, to our colleagues in DPW. From there, we will develop a, a safety report that then they will be required to implement and also redress. We'll be working with Mr. Strickland and his team to ensure that we have safety items purchased since, from PPE equipment and the like, depending on if it's confined space to regular, just having a best, if anyone of your council members go to one of our wastewater treatment plants, and you can be visibly seen at our wastewater treatment plant. Safety is first, and that's my mandate from this administration with, under Dr. Mitchell and Deputy Director. And we're taking it serious. And I can say that the team that we're building will ensure that whatever safety issues we've had in the past will no longer exist.
So I, I deeply appreciate the seriousness with which it seems you're treating the issue. I will say that has not been reflected to the workers that I've spoken to, nor to the union that represents them. We had a conversation recently with Cub, and again, there, there is a sense and a sentiment that issues historically have not been taken seriously enough by the agency, that leadership sometimes, and this is not a knock on anyone in this room, but sweeps it under the rug, that in order to sort of keep it moving, we have not done the proper investments in exactly what you're talking about, whether it's the wastewater facilities, whether it's the trucks, whether it's the trench boxes, where we know when folks are going in, if, you know, God forbid, a site were to collapse, that could be catastrophic, that we simply have not done that level of prevention. And so I think it is really important, both that you are sort of, both committing tonight to this council, to the citizens, to Baltimore, but also that it gets effectively communicated back to your own workers, that the level of rigor is going up in terms of safety inspections. And I would just hope that in addition to everything that you've outlined, that you also have a communications plan to make sure sightline supervisors know that the standards are going up. And apologies if I misspoke on that worker. I believe they got sick and then passed away later that day. But either way, it is essential, not just because of OSHA, but because of the folks that work here, and that we want to come work here, and we want to stay working here to deliver the city services. So again, I, I guess to kind of wrap this up, how are you all going to communicate what sounds like a sea change in the way that we are taking safety of our employees seriously at DPW to your own workers?
Right. Thank you for that question again, Councilman. The first thing with communication is, one, start it from top down, bottom up. One, as my colleagues know, in executive leadership, I have been that advocate. No excuses. We need a safety manager, deputy director, give, I mean, the positions, and as well as the, the funding to get the safety managers. Secondly, what we're doing is we're addressing the low-hanging fruits or the serious items with, and we have multiple consultants. We have one that's doing the facilities. We have two consultants on the wastewater treatment plants that did with those. And they've addressed the high-ticket items that this utility has been addressing immediately. Safety has to be first, and particularly if there's big-ticket items that could cause true life and safety issues. We have to deal with those first, and those are the immediate things that we're being addressed. Long-term, the communication strategy will be have, what we do, we will be, we do monthly safety meetings with the leadership to talk about the issues that our safety manager will be recruited, that has been recruited to address, and that will be trickling down through the executive leadership team to the senior leaderships. We also do our quarterly, senior leadership means every meeting we meet and we talk about safety. Andrea Bowie, she does those presentations with the senior leadership. And then one thing we're, we're teasing out, and we would love to, if you have any suggestions, is how do we get the employees to communicate their concerns, both confidentially or publicly? It doesn't really matter, but we want to make sure that we're addressing the concerns. And we're working through industry standards with that, looking at other utilities and other industrial facilities that have this type of sensitive areas or this type of hazardous work, what other industries are doing. So we're looking at best practices so that, one, we don't go back to the past, and two, it's sustainable.
Appreciate that. For my second snaking around question, I do want to just amend what my colleague said about just the interconnectedness and the collaboration that needs to exist between DOT and DPW especially. And I've appreciated, there's a large sinkhole on Boston Street, have been working closely with the city administrator to address it, and have very much appreciated her support. But all that to say, we see this so often where one hand doesn't talk to the other, and there's a lot of punting back and forth between the agencies. And I cannot tell you how frustrating it is for the residents that we represent, and then ultimately for us, because folks are doing the 3-1-1s, they're doing exactly what we ask them to do, then they're communicating it to their councilperson, and it, just the time it takes, the lack of communication back and forth, and no one really taking clear ownership. Again, this is why I am grateful to our city administrator for really pushing on this issue. But I, I just think generally, we need such a stronger level of inter-agency collaboration and communication and interface with council and with the residents that we represent. Thank you.
I'm the next snake here, I guess.
Okay. Dorsey.
Thank you.
And then we've got Dorsey, and then Burnett, and then Ramos.
I'm just going to level up here. I'm going to go even deeper into this DOT-DPW relationship. We have a, we have a complete streets ordinance that requires that regardless of who is doing the work, who initiated the work, what the reason is, when projects are on roads that are of a certain classification, you know, basically beyond small neighborhood streets, anything beyond that, anything where a stripe would be applied to the street, it meets this threshold where any work that's done to it triggers a requirement to make improvements to accessibility for multiple modes and transfer, you know, safety for vulnerable road users and such. We're all kind of familiar with this. DPW was a part of the working group that was mandated in the ordinance to come together, to put this policy together. What is DPW's level of commitment to complying with this in all applicable circumstances? Like when DPW is undertaking a major project on a roadway, it would be then DPW's, you know, responsibility to initiate a plan for the change for improvements?
Yep.
So we're not putting it back the way it was, but putting it back in a better condition?
No. Councilmember Dorsey, that is an excellent question. And I'm going to repeat it just to make sure I, I answer it correctly. When we do a major capital project, you know, how do we re, restore that, that street, that paving because of the trenching and the work that we do in, in communities, whether that's small residential communities or large commercial communities? And that's, that's a very excellent question. As you know, the restoration work for a trench job has, has, has increased, meaning in many cases, when we do that work, now we're, we are now required to do pretty much full street repaving. As you know, those costs of that job has tremendously increased the cost of doing a water main project. And as such, you have two things that you do when you increase the cost of those major CIP. You either raise rates to cover that, or you have to figure out how to do less work, meaning less improvements, because you, because there's a more, a larger cost to each project, right? And so I had the blessing of, of walking a neighborhood with Councilmember Torrance. And he knows this well, and, and he walked me through his district, maybe a month ago, a couple of weeks ago. And idea came up through Councilmember Torrance that we are now looking at it, and so I don't want to take credit for this, is we're really now engaging with DOT because the cost is so significant for our water contractors to do that work. We are now working with DOT and looking at DOT to help us support that, because some of their in-house staff and in-house crews are a lot cheaper than the cost of it going through a contractor. So we are now, to your, your point, in partnership and through the, you know, ideas that we were just walking down a neighborhood and the idea came out. And that sparked something, that sparked a conversation with the DOT. So now we're engaging, how can we fund the DOT to do this extra work for us after we do a major, so that, number one, we can kind of level out utility rate increase, but number two, so that we can continue to replace 15 miles of water mains a year. And so that's critical for us. And, and, and the idea from the council member was something that we took serious, we took action, we're working with our partners in DOC, our DOC, to see how we can implement that. And so we're excited about those conversations and that work, but that's the kind of ideas that we have to do to be successful in, in mitigating costs for our ratepayers, but also being able to do and restore that work as quickly as possible. So those are the discussions we have, and it's through that collaboration that we have, not only with DOT, but through our legislative partners.
Appreciate that. I'll tell you, as I've mentioned in here already, is, I mean, DOT has their own problems initiating project design and planning early enough in a project, in an early enough phase that they're actually ready to go at the right time. And so what I would hope and like to have some further assurance of is what DPW's plan is for engaging them early enough in the process that actual plans are being developed so that they can just roll out step by step as a project phases through. And we'll note that the way that the law is written, you know, I, I understand the concept of you got to do less, or you got to raise rates, or whatever. We have a law. It's a complete streets law. We have to figure out what we're going to do in order to be able to comply with it, for all of us to be able to comply with it. And in doing so, recognizing that it's not the length of roadway that's being disturbed that is the trigger, right? Because at a certain point, you say, well, since we're not redoing three miles of road, that, you know, we don't want a little bit of it. The, the point is that when we make changes to road design, even in little sections, it then prompts us to have to do another segment along that road, and another segment along that road. So it's really that we are disturbing a road at all of a certain classification that requires that we make changes. And I'd just like some further assurance of what DPW and DOT's understanding is about where and when that engagement takes, takes place when planning projects.
Yeah. I mean, as we go forward and, and looking at a different model so that we can have a, bless you, a, a, a model that, that works, we're engaging with them. This is new to the utility. This is new to all utilities. And, and so what we're committed to, and giving some updates, is having those discussions and working through those work plans so that we make sure that we meet the complete streets model, but also so that we can figure out how to do it at a very cost-effective way, so it doesn't challenge us in being able to update the much-needed infrastructure, underground infrastructure in the city.
As a final note, Mr. Chair, I will close with this. For reference, the complete streets ordinance itself required that the manual have in it a spreadsheet chart that down one side includes every single type of project that could possibly happen in a roadway, and all of the successes, succession of steps that would need to take place if such a project were taking place. And if DPW projects do not appear in that first column of that chart, that is a deficiency in DOT's development of the complete streets manual. And if you can't find it in there, I'd like to know. And we will see to it that DOT rectify that in the complete streets manual, because it absolutely, per the law, must be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burnett, then Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, a lot, a large portion of your, your opening, Mr. Director, focused on sort of issues with hiring, I mean, just sort of summarizing, like shortages in staff, essentially. One of the, and it's something I plan to raise with all of the larger agencies, is there does not, we have a very diverse city. There's a lot of new Americans that live in our city. But I can't think of a single agency that does a really good job at directly reaching out to those communities so that our workforce is as diverse and reflective of the city, as the city is. Whether that's making sure that all of our hiring materials are multilingual, making sure that we have staff, I'm not going to steal your wind, that, that speak Spanish, that are on staff, that are, or whether, speaking Spanish or any of the multitude of languages that folks speak in the city of Baltimore. But I just think that there's a, a lost opportunity here when we talk about the gaps. And I think that becomes reflective in the budget when we see how much contractual services have gone up in DPW and other agencies. gone up in DPW and other agencies, in spending money to hire contractors or staffing studies and all this money that goes into figuring out, like, how do we bring people in? And we have entire folks that could be potential workforce here that we just literally cannot communicate that these opportunities are available. So what is the agency doing to really turn the tide here? Because I do understand COVID and the impacts that it's had, I understand the larger workforce issues that every municipality is trying to navigate. But at the end of the day, we do know that more can be done to directly reach communities that their first language may not be English and whatever that language is, who have a lot to offer and could be filling in these positions to ease the workload and save taxpayers' dollars every day. I mean, if we do that in a very intentional way.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I could take that first part of the question. If I missed something out, our HR staff that works within DPW can help me respond as well too. We've been doing tremendous outreach work for all of our DPW positions. We've held multiple hiring fairs and events, we've partnered with different council member offices to hold those events, we've worked with the city's DHR on the citywide hiring events that they've had. I know at some of those locations as well, they've, at some of those events as well, they've brought in translators to come in and work with our teams so that we're offering that type of service as we're engaging with potential new hires within DPW. All of the work that our team has been doing lately has just been paying dividends overall within our agency. I'll highlight and tout some of the work that we've done just within our Bureau of Solid Waste. You know, when I first came in about a year ago, I think their vacancy rate was about 15%. Today it's at nine, 9%. If you took out Solid Waste as its own standalone agency, it would be competing with another one as far as having the best vacancy rate in the city. And it's just through all of the extra and additional outreach efforts that we've done through our staff, being more proactive, picking up the phone and calling candidates that are on lists, going to in-person events, looking ahead and scheduling more, and then continuing to work with the mayor's offices and the citywide agency offices to help us and assist us, that when we go to those events and if we need resources as far as language assistance, that that's available to us.
Not trying to say that you all aren't working hard, I mean, I've seen the flyers, we posted them, I mean, I get it. I don't think there should be a single event where there are materials that are not translated into a multitude of languages. And I would say that because, you know, when people think of the 8th District, the data will tell you it's largely black and white district. However, most folks don't know that there's a large and growing Eastern European population that's coming in. There are, you know, a multitude of folks who, if they were to, you would do something at Emmons High School, you probably just think, oh, let me just bring a bunch of stuff in English. But if you're in Southeast Baltimore and Councilman Cohen's district, you may say, oh, maybe we need a translator because there's a lot of folks who speak Spanish here. Folks can come, folks live everywhere in the city that English may not be their first language, and at every opportunity, we shouldn't be missing people because we're trying to be strategic with our resources. It should just be how we do business in the city of Baltimore, period, and making sure that we're, no matter where we are in Baltimore, anybody that shows up needs to be to read what's on that table or have somebody that can translate for them regardless of the geography. And again, I plan to ask the same question to all of them, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but when I look at how much money we're spending on contractual services and the shortages of services, I just think we're missing the mark here as a city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, then Councilman Torrance.
Thank you. Quick follow-up on that, just making sure that DPW is still.
Is this?
It's a follow-up to his quick question.
Okay.
And I'll ask my question.
Please be quick.
Yep. The, that DPW is still on task to hire a Spanish-speaking liaison.
Yes, ma'am. We checked and it's listed and we're recruiting.
Great.
So this will be for our Spanish-speaking liaison to help us work with communities. So that is underway.
Great, because we also need to have public meetings to be able to be translated, et cetera. Okay. My question is, in the capital budget, we saw that there is another water project coming along Greenmount Avenue between 29th Street and Cold Spring Lane. My colleague from the 4th and I vehemently protested that this move, we do not want this to move forward in that because we, the street has just been dug up and just been repaved, beautifully repaved with federal money. We understood from a bunch of emails that it's slated to start in 2027, which the councilman, I think, will back me up in saying that that is unacceptable because the businesses and the residents on that street have been, have suffered for over three years with a dug-up street for conduit and water. So it makes zero sense that the street would be cut up again, especially since we spent a bunch of, not our own money, federal money to replace the street. So A, what happened that we didn't do it all at the same time? And B, can we please push this project back to another 10 years? Because it's completely unacceptable for this community, these two communities, three, four communities, to be dealing with this again. Let me just tell you how much we're going to have a protest. You'll have the entire neighborhood of Waverly, Guilford, Oaken Shaw, and all of the others that you represent to, you know, be protesting this issue.
I'm going to speak to that very quickly. If we need more detail, we'll reach out to our engineers. Yes, we heard you very clearly at the last time we discussed this project. The project is still listed in the capital program in the outward years. These projects are put in place there, there are plans for them, but they have not been scoped out. So it is not the intention of this project to go in and redo an area that we were already in. This is for a water main replacement part of our 15-mile-per-year program. This is a portion of pipe that we haven't touched. So what I think we have time to do is to look at this project, see where it can begin and end without impinging upon that area that you're concerned about. We don't want to go back into areas, excuse me, we don't want to go back into areas that we've already been there. I know we did a lot of utility work in working with DOT at the time because of their conduit. We actually had to make some changes for our connections in that area to make sure that we wouldn't have to go in in a couple of years. So we did everything we could at the time to avoid the very issue you're describing. So I think that what we can do is continue to work closely with you just to let you know what it's looking like, what areas that we are thinking we may have to be impinging upon, and, you know, we can work this out. I don't think that our intention is to go in and dig up where we already were because we already had done the work for our utilities at that time. So that is not the intention, and we can keep you both informed about where we are and if it looks like we're progressing, then we can sit down and talk about the areas of impact. I know it's hard for these communities to sustain those long contracts. As Councilman Torrance well knows, he has multiple long contracts in his district.
Right, we share part of those, we share those too.
Exactly. So I don't want you to think that we're just going to go back in and dig up the area because we just don't know what we may have to do, but we did deal with those pipes in that area.
Right, that's why I was wondering why this even came up again, because you were in there already. So we can talk about that offline, but just to sort of say publicly that this kind of sort of repeat, again, digging up the street a couple of times, you know, we're just like, if I see a shovel going into Greenmount Avenue, I'm going to scream because that is, it's just not acceptable that we would end up going in a couple of times within, you know, only a couple of years.
We'd be happy to talk to you both offline. It is not our intention to cause that kind of distress, but I personally don't know what the condition is of the pipes in that area. And so we do a lot of prioritizing based on condition and need, and so we can go over that with all.
Yeah, it just should have been done while we were in there, that's the thing. If it was a patch job and not a full replacement, that's unfortunate.
Right, again, I don't know that we're going to be impinging or planning to impinge on any of those areas. So that's why I'm concerned that it may be causing distress that is unnecessary. So offline would be great.
Okay, well, we'll continue to have that and we'll coordinate with your office as well on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
I was just going to say, I agree with everything said, I feel like I didn't have to add much, but she's spot on, I agree.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Director. It was both our ideas. I just want to make sure the public understands why we did walk. It was related, that was going to be my next follow-up on the last round, Mr. Chair, about what idea came out of what we saw together in terms of our projects, namely for the public's consumption to understand that many of the projects that are happening now were actually put out to bid prior to the pandemic. So often, a lot of the work that we have being completed now has an escalated cost. So my idea with the Director and I thinking this through together is how can we, as a city, efficiently save money, but also ensure that we can do the 15 miles together, but also put more people who are Baltimore City residents to work and have them employed in the city of Baltimore, but also ensure that the rates don't increase on our residents to do this work better? So Director, I just want to thank you for, one, taking that idea seriously and vetting it with DOT, look forward to hearing about those meetings after budget hearing. But my next question is, how can the council help you now in terms of the escalated costs for the change orders that we have for the current projects that we have? And how can we fix that as you guys work on a long-term plan?
That's a pretty good question there. I mean, you know, for us, I mean, for us, you know, we have to take that time. As you know, many of our projects have been on the shelf for many years, and many of our project design was completed prior to the pandemic. As you know, the pandemic and the cost of inflation has really increased everything, right? All of our cost of living. But uniquely, it has had a tremendous impact on construction work. And so, you know, as we continue to roll out new projects and as we continue to look at our bids and looking at our engineering estimates at those times and what our bids are coming in, we're going to be working with the administration and the council to figure out how do we bridge that cap? And that's something as these projects are now starting to roll out, we will, this year and the year after, and the year after, have to really start looking at that and mitigating that plan. I think the plan for it now is, you know, the projects that we're working on now, you know, there's funding associated with that, but as you know, those pots will shrink. And so we'll be coming up with plans to figure out what that path forward is. With the underlying baseline concern and our intention is to continue to keep rates at a reasonable level because I think to Vice President Middleton's point earlier, people just, you know, they can't continue to afford the price of water going up. And so we have to make sure that we're looking at that. And so just to say, over the next year or two, that's our intention, is how do we reduce that? One of the programs that you've probably heard of is our abundantly initiative. It's, that abundantly initiative is very critical. The goal, the end goal of it, number one, is to get more Baltimore City companies that do this work up from a subcontractor to a prime level. Our goal there is really to create more competition in this space locally, so local folks can do this work, internal folks hopefully can do this work, but local people can do the work. When you have more competition on those projects, we hope that drive down costs. So there's a lot of things that we're doing internally to drive down costs, and one of the things is abundantly is really critical to that. If we can get four or five more general contractors that do water repair and replacement work, we can have a lot more competitive contracts that hopefully drive down rates. And I can tell you, that type of program is very unique. I think Baltimore City is the only utility that is now engaging in unbundling contracts so that our medium and smaller size contractors can begin to get access to these work.
And just a quick follow-up, in terms of the contracting, have we looked into changing our procurement process for past behavior so that we can start looking at ways that we can mitigate bad actors who do bad work?
I know we do evaluations after contracts, whether that's from an in-boost standpoint or whether that's from a performance standpoint. And to your point around inspectors and this, you know, our goal is to make sure that, and we have to do a better job as well, is that when you do work in Baltimore City, you're doing it with a standard that meets Baltimore City resident's standard. And when we don't hold our contractors to that type of standard, we have to mitigate those losses, our going back and doing that. And so we're really working internally on tightening that review process as we close out contracts so that we make sure, to your point, a bad actor doesn't continue to be a bad actor, at least in Baltimore City.
So I have a request. One is to get a briefing on changes to the procurement process for past performance and how we can create a weight that then discourages persons from who contract with the city of Baltimore from doing bad work.
Nate, Nina, or Sophia? Good? Excellent. Councilman Torrance, you good? Thank you. Director Mitchell, the city's system of record for doing utility work is in VISTA? Who's the lead from DP, who's the lead position title from DPW on ensuring that, Mr. Chief Wolf? When we're doing a capital project, not emergency, but a planned capital project on water, wastewater, sewer, are our folks on the project management side filling out the appropriate information in VISTA?
Yes.
100% certain?
That is our policy. We're supposed to put all our projects in the VISTA, so we can coordinate with other agencies.
Do we have quality control in place to ensure that our project managers are putting that information in VISTA?
It is checked. I know that that's our policy to make sure that our projects are put in VISTA along with other utilities, Vicinity, BGE, DOT, so that is our policy. I'd have to check to see what the QC policy is, but, you know, we do that, that's part of our procedure.
Can you provide us the QA QC policy on reviewing whether or not project managers put those capital projects into VISTA and whether or not they make changes within VISTA based on changes to the project schedule and/or scope?
I can get you information on how we handle that, yes.
Okay. Can you also provide us documentation of, sample documentation of, say, five QA QC checks that have occurred this calendar year for project managers putting that information in VISTA?
I can get you information on how we check that, you know, and put into VISTA.
The reason I ask the question is because I suspect it's not happening.
Okay.
And I believe that there are tens of millions of dollars on the table in terms of costs of utility work coordination, whether it's from what you all call customers, ratepayers. BGE refers to them as ratepayers, Comcast, Verizon, Vicinity, DOT, everyone who's in our public right of way. So I want to make sure that we're doing everything humanly possible to effectively coordinate utility work, which is something that has not been effectively occurring in the city. So I really appreciate your attention to it. Thank you, Chief Wolf.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Councilman Glover, then Councilwoman Porter. Councilwoman Porter, and then Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last budget hearing, we talked through property maintenance as it relates to boarding up vacant homes. I know that the team, the property maintenance team is doing their very best, they are always quick and responsive. I'm wondering, what are we doing with the repeat offenders that we have to go back to each and every time? Are we exploring any type of different supplies to be used, whether it be wood, cement? And I know we have Mr. McIntyre in the room, and so either one of you can answer. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So, yes, we're looking at different types of materials, perhaps double boarding. We've recently purchased some different kind of, like you said, cement that kind of goes into the screws to kind of jam them up. So we are taking additional steps. We're getting screws that don't have common We're getting screws that don't have common, they don't use the common thread like a Phillips or a Flathead. What I will say is that, you know, if they want to get in there, they're going to get in there. But we are looking at the other options to make sure that we are, you know, doing the best to get those. I mean, we have some properties, we might board them five times in a week, you know. Soon as we go there, they come back and take it off. We change the screws, we change how we board it, and they are creative. So we're trying to keep up with them.
No, and I appreciate that, Mr. McIntyre. And I just want to congratulate you on all the work that you've done so far in your new position. I can definitely see an increase in coordination with Yvonne Moore Jackson and Toya, I believe she had left. I do appreciate that. I want to just look at it from a cost perspective of us keep sending out DPW workers. And so, I'm wondering if there are any proactive coordination with MOHS for persons experiencing homelessness, so that we can make sure that, and also BPD, so that we can ensure that those individuals are not getting back into those homes by any means necessary? Because I'll share with you, it was a fire on my street whereby persons experiencing homelessness actually got into a house and set it on fire. And it could have just drastically changed, like just drastically changed and damaged the neighborhood. And so, when I talk about boarding up and making sure these properties are secure, I'm talking about proactively going back out, making sure that they're inspected, working with housing, making sure that they are staying boarded. If they're not boarding, what is the process of going to BPD, you know, BPD or other city agencies to ensure that they're getting boarded?
Yeah. So currently, we do, we do work with BPD if we need to get folks out of the homes. We currently do not work with the Mayor's Office of Home and Services, but that's something that I can just start that coordination with. You know, if we have a property we've gone to three times in a week, I can reach out to the Director of the Mayor's Office of Home and Service to see if they can provide those folks some resources.
Thank you. Ms. Moore Jackson, did you want to say something, ma'am?
No, I was going to say, we do work with the, and I know Kedrick doesn't know all of the process, because he's new to the position, but we do work with the Department of Homeless Services if we suspect a person is homeless. We give them a call, they send their outreach workers out to talk to them, see if they could find secure homes for them. And also, we do have an SOP on the repeat boarding, the methods that we use, the double boarding, the glue. We also use two-by-four to try to secure the board to the frames. So there are several, and as Kedrick spoke to before, we are looking into other methods.
What about cement?
So, we've been working with the Fire Department for several years on the cement blocks. And initially, they had some concerns with that, you know, if a fire broke out, it may be difficult for them to get in.
Okay.
To help. So we can, we can go back to them to see if that's still their stance. So I can follow up with them on that.
And Director, you know, again, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because DPW is, you know, it's a growing agency that needs all of its, that needs all of its dollars. And so, figuring out ways to reduce costs, and also, just make sure that we're not wasting those dollars by repeatedly going back to some of the property that I know exists within my district and all other districts as well. Thank you, ma'am. I mean, I'm sorry, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Real quick, before I go to Councilman Conway, is there any thought to modifying the policy that Councilwoman Porter just referenced with respect to doing the second floor of row homes?
So the concern with the second floor, so we don't allow our employees to get on ladders, we don't allow them to enter the vacant property because of safety issues. So the second floor, if it is a brand-new vacant, and we have the code enforcement officer there along with the police, we may be able to board the second floor, if it, like, if it's brand-new. I mean, a person just moved out, the inspector goes in, sees that all the floors are there, you know, we may be able to do that. Or if, when there's a fire escape, then sometimes we're able to do that. But we don't use ladders, we don't enter, and it's for the employees' safety.
Understood. Thank you, Chief. Councilman Torrance?
Have we looked at working with code enforcement in terms of having property owners who are frequent flyers in terms of boarding, having metal grates erected on their property, and placing the onus on the property owners?
Yeah, so ultimately, the property owner is responsible for maintaining the property, keeping it secure. And I know that they have, code enforcement has a legal department that goes after the owners to make sure that they rehab the property eventually. The properties that we see most with the repeat boarding is those properties where, you know, the owner, we don't know who the owner is, or, I mean, the property's been vacant for years, the owner may be deceased. So those are some of the challenges, but I know, and you can, I don't know if HCD has had their hearing yet, but I'm sure they could give you more information on it.
Thank you. Councilman Conway, and then we've got two from Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last year's budget included $400,000 to conduct studies on the implementation of the zero-waste initiatives and the feasibility of that plan. Have those studies been conducted?
I'll let our Solid Waste Bureau answer it, but I can tell you that currently, we're working on finalizing our scope of work for that feasibility study. So as you know, it can provide us our future path for waste diversion. So we're in the middle now of developing that scope to get that RPRFQ out later this year, again, once we have, you know, conversations with our key stakeholders.
Got it. And just this month, earlier this month, it's the last day of the month, you guys issued the 10-year solid waste management plan and sent that over to MDE. Can you tell me a little bit about what's in that 10-year plan? And given our contract with Bresco is scheduled to end within the next decade, how we're thinking about those needs within that plan?
No, I'll let our manager speak to it. I can tell you, just in general, that plan is predicated, and that feasibility study and all the work that we'll do in between, is predicated on not extending the life of the Bresco Conference, our contract. And that's our sole goal here in DPW, is ensure that's not done. But I'll let our manager speak to details.
So the solid waste management plan identifies target for 50% diversion and reduction based on, like, what our max diversion and source reduction could be. So the source reduction potential that's identified through the actions in the plan is 38,500 tons per year, and the diversion potential is 242,000 tons per year. There are, in the solid waste management plan, Section 5, there are costs associated with all of the actions and programs that have been described. So this diversion and reduction potential really is contingent on us being able to fund those plans. And there is a plan in place in the first section of Section 5 as well, to assess financing these options.
Got it. I'd look forward to reviewing the plan in depth. And I'm curious, in light of some of those things that we know we need to accomplish over the next 10 years, what are some of the things we're working on right now?
So from a diversion perspective, we're looking at expanding the offerings that we have in place for residents at convenience centers, looking at additional contracts that could potentially address mattress recycling, that could address textile recycling. We're also renewing our electronic recycling contract at the moment, so expanding the convenience center offerings is a priority for us. The Office of Waste SAVersion has also received additional funding through a grant with USDA to expand our food scrap drop-off locations. So we will be expanding our network by, I believe, four additional food scrap drop-off locations, and we've partnered with local universities to do that. And as the Director mentioned, we're also scoping a zero-waste plan that takes a more, like, dynamic approach to zero-waste planning, that's more response, like, a lot of times, I think the downfall of plans is that they're written at a time, and things change.
Things change.
And so, this plan really is, I'm hoping to gear it towards creating tools that'll help us continually analyze and assess changing markets to be able to identify the most advantageous solutions.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing, especially you since you came on. You know, it's been refreshing to see some of the work you guys have been doing, and I've had an opportunity to go out and check out new opportunities with your team. I appreciate you, Director, for putting your time in on this. I do share some of the same concerns that my colleague from the 10th brought up about timeline and making sure that we make enough progress so that we're not back in the same situation we were in just, I guess, now three or three years ago, where we had to renew our contract with Bresco. So, you know, if there are things that we should really be thinking about as a council, I'm sure that some of the stuff we've already thought about in this budget, but certainly, I want to make sure that we're prepared for our next conversation, because next year we'll be here before you know it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer, you're up twice.
So last year, at this budget hearing, we were told that you guys needed the full budget because you anticipated restarting weekly curbside collection within the year. Being that that didn't happen, how much savings were there that you didn't perform those functions?
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question. And I think we wanted to try to communicate the potential savings are not savings for that in our budget presentation. What we saw in 2010, when we had the one-plus-one program where you opted into the yellow container, we had about 41,000 residents that opted into those services. And when we did that, we had about 20 crews that provided weekly recycling service. Fast forward to 2021, early 2022, when we rolled out approximately 169,000 blue containers and began to provide bi-weekly recycling service. In order to be able to obtain bi-weekly recycled service, I just want to remind that our crews are working 11.6 hours a day, but it is still 20 crews that is doing that. And the reason why is, if you think about going from 41,000 containers to 169, their work went up 315%. So from that standpoint, they're, all crews that was working weekly recycling is yet still working bi-weekly recycling and still yet doing more work, if that makes sense, based upon those slides. There are no savings. Actually, there's additional costs, because our overtime costs went up, because there's four times the work. Our fatigue costs went up, because our employees are working 12-hour shifts, lifting garbage up all day and all night. It's unacceptable. What we have to do, we have to hire these 20 crews, we have to get these new vehicles so that we can drive down the amount of units we're doing per crew, so that our employees can live and work a quality of life that we all expect. It is very unfortunate that they work without air conditioning. It's very unfortunate. Again, they work without adequate facilities, but it's even more unfortunate that they have to do that in a 12-hour work shift. And our goal, and my goal, is always to appreciate our employees and to provide them the resources that we need. And again, I just have to thank Mayor Scott for being able to put these resources in the budget, our Administrator Leach for being able to have the confidence to give us the resources, and Deputy C. Administrator Johnson for supporting DPW in all the day-to-day activities. For us to say, number one, that we can begin to provide our employees with a quality of work, a work-life quality that we all expect, but more importantly, a work environment. Because we have to recognize that our solid waste crews, there's no office that they work in. Their office is that truck. And if we're giving them trucks that are 20 years old, it's unacceptable. We giving them trucks without air conditioning is unacceptable, and that's what this budget does. And it took that partnership to make that happen. So when you look at savings, and we can go back to our chart so we can walk through that one more time, there's no savings, because there's more cost to being able to provide four times the amount of recycling carts that didn't exist when we rolled them out. We should have did our homework before we rolled out those carts, so that our employees didn't have to endure that. I wasn't here for that, but I ensured that we did a report with our Rubicon, I ensured this council that we were going to get the resources, we were going to communicate those resources, but more importantly, I ensured this council that with the work of our administration and the support of our mayor, that we were going to get weekly recycling up as fast as possible. It's predicated on those vehicles, and it's predicated on those staff. Without both of them, we won't get there. And our partners in DGS, and the late Chief Lyons that passed away, as you all know, the week before he passed, he was ringing those phones to be able to get these 30 vehicles here by December. And I just want to say, it's in partnership that we do that. And when these crews, and when these trucks come, first quarter 2024, we're going to get back to bi-weekly recycling, and that's our goal.
Okay, so Director, we had this conversation last year. Last year, you failed to answer the question, so I'm going to ask it again. Last year, you guys said that you would restart it during the year, and that's why you needed the full budget. Curbside collection had been happening prior to that, with that budget, with that equipment, with those employees. The reason why the DPW employees are working these long hours is because decisions that you and the leadership of DPW made. Before you rolled out those cans, I understand the cans were here in a warehouse before you got here, I get that. You are the one who decided to roll that out. Prior to you rolling out those cans, we, you and I, had a conversation in your boardroom, you had conversations with other people, the previous head of solid waste, and others who all cautioned that the timing of rolling out those cans would be a huge mistake. You and I had an hours-long conversation about what a mistake it would be to roll out those cans at that time. You made the decision to do that. Furthermore, after you rolled out those cans and touted the success at previous DPW city council hearings, you and your team testified here that the collection times were not longer because of these cans, and not longer because of the decisions that you guys were making. I've posted that video before, I'm happy to post it again tonight. The reality is, is that it did make these shifts a lot longer. The decisions that you made are the reasons why the routes are as long as they are. That is unfair. That is unfair to those workers. I have been up here demanding increases, pay increases, for them. You opened up your statement today about thanking the council for their leadership and fighting for the employees and bringing food to the employees there. You're referencing work that I've been doing for years. When I look at this budget, I see a 40% increase to the administration budget of adding these new positions to make your workload and your teams, administrative teams' workload, a lot better and a lot easier. I do not see those increases that those workers deserve. Furthermore, when I get, I got that spreadsheet from you guys finally, after requesting it multiple times, for the salaries of last year, and out of the top 50 employees in DPW, your top 50, I'm not talking about the top executive team, I'm talking about five people, 10 people, the top 50 employees of DPW, their combined compensation is $8.3 million. That equates to about $166,000 each. When we look at the pay for the sanitation workers, and we look When we look at the pay for the sanitation workers and we look at their compensation and you take those numbers, it comes out to about $38,000, $39,000 each, all in. I have not seen an agency that has a bigger pay scale difference than DPW. The people who have cushy positions next door to here, who are sitting in beautiful offices with air conditioning, they're getting paid very well. And the employees who are out there are not. And so when you go and you're talking about asking for another $600,000 for the administration to make your workloads easier, I already have an amendment drafted to address that, to get rid of that and to give that to the workers, divide that out to those workers. You can look at any one of those divisions, whether it's the 181 budgeted positions for the workers in solid waste, or it's the workers who are in wastewater who are working fixing these water main breaks, they're getting paid, they're getting paid bupkis. It's a fraction of what they need to be making, and I don't see you yelling from the rooftops like I am asking for that. And so when I'm asking a question about this budget and answers you gave last year, to say that there's no savings, we're going to get into that, we're going to get into that tonight because there's a whole bunch of vacancies and I would like to know where all of those, where all of that money went for all of those budgeted positions that are unfilled. But please, when I ask a question, don't go into this long time, don't take me back to 2010, okay? Because that's not answering the questions. If you want to go back, let's go back to when I started on the council and many members here started on the council, and that was in 2017. And recycling levels have dropped significantly since 2017. That's not because there's less of an interest in recycling, there's more of an interest in recycling in this city, but it's because of decisions that you guys have made. And so if you're telling me there's no savings, a request that I have for this committee, I would like to have an actual spreadsheet of all the money spent by DPW, an itemized list, so that we can see how there is no money left when it comes to that. My second question is, give us a hard date when you believe curbside collections will resume. Based on the information you have now, you say you have a plan, you got it all set. Give us a hard date.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleifer. I think you raised many questions in that and I'll try to address them as swiftly as possible. I think you were correct in your statement. When I came to DPW in 2021, the blue cans were already here. I came here, as you know, recycling wasn't happening. It was stopped for, what, eight months to a year? Street sweeping wasn't happening, cornic cans wasn't getting picked up, graffiti wasn't happening, all those things. One of the reasons why they hired me is number one, the Sea of Oakland and the program that I put in when I was the public works director, and many of you all have traveled there, is one of the most progressive zero waste programs in the country. I signed, literally, I signed for the facility. I signed the contracts. I ran one of the most robust trash programs in the country. It wasn't two containers, it was three. We had to pick them up all in the same day within two hours of each other. I ran one of the tightest programs in the country. When I got here, blue cans was here. I'm going to tell you why. It's because this city signed a procurement contract to be able to do that. In addition to that, in order for us to get the blue containers, we had to sign a contract with our sponsor of the blue containers that committed this city to pushing out the containers at a certain time. In addition to that, we had had to get a loan for those containers. I wasn't a part of the contracting signing with the vendor that gave us the grant that mandated when we put those containers out. As you know, I wasn't here for the procurement, but what I was here to do is try to figure out with the resources that we have, understanding the pandemic, understanding what we had promised the public, my job was to stabilize those programs. We talking about street sweeping now because we stabilized it. We're not talking about cornic cans not getting picked up on York Road because we're picking it up. We're talking about 99.9% pickup and recycling and trash. We weren't even picking it up before I got here. It was 0%. I want to thank the men and women of Solid Waste for doing it because without their investment and time and resources and working 12-hour days with the conditions, we wouldn't be here. To go back to us being a top-heavy organization, we have 2,800 positions. We have 58 positions that are paid 100K or more. That's well below the industry standard in a public works department. I consider this because we don't pay a good wage is why we have so many vacancies. Having 58 out of 2,800 positions being paid 100K or less, I would say as your public works director, that that's not satisfactory. We have to ensure whether it's the laborers, all the way down to our managers, that they're prepared fairly and adequate for their service. And I don't believe 58 getting paid 100,000 is going to be able to meet that need, especially when DC is surpassing it, especially when WSCC around the corner is surpassing it. Howard County is beating us, Carroll County is beating our managers. We are some of the lowest-paid workers in this region. If we don't change, to your point, these vacancies will continue to grow, not just in DPW. This is a citywide issue. So to that point, we just have to look at that and do better. We shouldn't just look at the numbers, we should look at what we compare ourselves with our competition in this day and age with the cost going up so dramatically because of inflation and figure out where do we stand. And I can tell you, we are not standing at the top of the heap, we are at the bottom. And that's why this agency has such a tough time recruiting talent. It's not because we're not trying, we got positions posted, we can't get people to apply and with the right experience because we just don't pay. So, all that being said, we had a contractual obligation, a legally contractual obligation when I came to Baltimore City before it was signed before me that says we have to get blue carts out. It was not my decision, it was a contractual decision. What I had to do when I hit Baltimore from Oakland was figure out how do I stabilize these programs? I think we did a damn good job and I'm so happy and supportive of my people in Solid Waste for doing that. And I'm committed to continuing to advocate and fight with you, with this council, to continue to advocate for more resources. But I really believe that we have to take, we can't look at it in a silo. We have to look at ourselves as regional players. And in any regional players, you have to figure out how do you compete with them so that you can get talent. This is not a DPW issue. This is a Baltimore City. Our entire organization are seeing vacancies everywhere. And we all understand that we have to be more competitive and that's what DPW has to do. And we're doing what we call a salary survey. HR is helping us do that. Why? Because if we don't change, we may not be able to support this infrastructure. So we have to make sure that we can competitive, so we can hire people at a wastewater treatment plant, so we can get drivers in our trucks, so we can get the construction, so we can do this tough job. Everyone is going up, as you know, and we got to make sure that we are meeting the needs. That's not something I'm in charge of, our labor partners, that we trust our labor commission, we trust our administration to do that. But again, you know, we work as hard as we can and they're doing great work under extreme conditions and I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay. My question was, give us a date that you believe recycling is going to be starting weekly. What is the date?
So we're projecting the first quarter of 2024. We will be able to provide you a more detailed date. The reason why I'm saying that, our data is really predicated on one major factor, when our vehicles will get here. Our vendor has told us by December 2023 that we'll have 25 vehicles here. But what we do know is just to get a normal car has been taking two years. We are hopeful that our vendor meets that expectation, that deadline, and we're hoping soon as those vehicles hit here and get their upfitting, that we're ready to go. We'll have a more certain timeline as we get closer because we'll know more where our trucks are in the build process because they are trucks that have to be customized and built. So as they get into the building stages, those trucks, and we get a little closer to later on in the fall, we'll have more detailed deadlines because it's going to be predicated on those trucks actually hitting the ground here in Baltimore.
That's not what you said last year. Last year, you said the whole thing was predicated on when the route optimization software would be ready. It was not, yes, we know we need more trucks, we need that across the board in every agency. The reality was, and what you said last year and last year's budget hearings, was that it was the route optimization software that was the problem. Because when you arrived here, we had trucks that were picking up weekly curbside collections, it was happening. Those trucks didn't just disappear. Sure, they're old, sure they need improvement, absolutely we need new stuff, but there was enough equipment that it was happening. Those trucks didn't just disappear when you got here. And so you said it was the route optimization software, so now you're saying it's the trucks. Have you secured the route optimization software for recycling collections?
I just want to correct what I said for the record. I said, when we finalize our Rubicon study, it will tell this body and the public exactly what resources is needed to get to weekly recycling. It was never predicated on route optimization. Route optimization helps us with our resources being more efficient, but it was always, it was, and you can look at our weekly report, our monthly reports that we provided this body, it was always predicated on the Rubicon report. And that Rubicon report says simply, we need more staff and we need more equipment. And that's what we're doing. And so I'm excited to the point that we did get the Rubicon study, we do now have the routing software and we have resources on the way.
You do or do not have the route optimization software?
We do, sir.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. And I would like as a committee request, a copy of that contract that mandated the specific timeline that we needed to roll out those cans? And one last thing on those cans, do you believe it was a mistake to roll it out the time that you guys rolled them out?
Our recycling rates...
Just say yes or no.
Our recycling rates are doubled. Baltimore City is recycling, we are reusing. There's never a problem when you have a city that begins to really engage in recycling in a new and great way. We find out many of our residents are doing that. We're seeing our recycling rates go up, we're seeing our reuse rates going up, we're implementing it apart of the 10 plan, and I think that the city, under the circumstances, has done a great job in rolling out the program, stabilizing it, and now bringing resources to it.
Did you, did you say, you said recycling rates doubled or did you say, what did you say about recycling rates going up?
I said, what we're picking up on the curbside as relates to cycling, how much plastics, how much aluminum, how much paper we're bringing up has increased very much so because we have a lot more people participating. As you can remember, prior to our rollout, we only had 25% of the public engage in recycling, which definitely was inequable. It should have been everyone. Now everyone has that shot and we're seeing more people participating and we're seeing more volume of recyclables.
Okay, I'm going to get to that on my next round of questions. However, to close this out, recycling is down 43% since 2017. That is according to the spreadsheet that you guys sent me about a month and a half ago when I asked for the annual recycling rate. So recycling is actually down, not up, according to the spreadsheet that you guys sent me.
I don't know what spreadsheet.
You were on the email.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on. I'm going to jump to Council President, he hasn't asked a question yet, then we're on Councilman Conway.
Thank you. Dr. Director, I'm sorry, I'm just coming in, but have we addressed ARPA yet? No. Did DPW receive any ARPA funding?
Yes, we were in line to receive $15 million.
15 million, you are in line to receive, but you have not to date?
Well, yes.
Is that in the latest, like the $80 million tranche of it?
Yeah, so we're receiving $15 million for facility increases, for technology advances, for fleet and vehicles, so we're receiving 15 million for that.
That's the latest batch?
Correct.
Correct. Can you provide the council an itemized breakout of the ARPA money you're expected to receive?
Yeah, we'll work through our ARPA office to provide that information.
Perfect, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, I want to focus on Service 675, Engineering and Construction Management for Water and Wastewater. I was combing through the performance metrics and one of the performance metrics is the percentage of projects completed on time and within budget. Looking at it over time, it is historically low. I'm no engineer, I don't manage projects, not of the scale that you guys work on, so I don't know if that's necessarily good or bad for the standard. I also noticed that our target is at 50%, which seems on its face low. I would hope that 100% of our projects are on time and under budget. Can you tell me a little bit about how we set that target? And even more, just in the 22 metric, we noted that it was at 23%. What's going on there and just tell me what we know?
Yes, I'm not, like I'm looking at the number, it's a little puzzling a little bit to myself, but I do know in the last six years for CIP DPW projects, we did $2.6 billion worth of work and our change order percentage was under 2%. Now, as far as on time, I know COVID has put a big impact into our work. A lot of projects had to stop, you know, it had to stop work orders, we didn't have enough workforce to do the jobs, so I think that percentage is playing into that number because, like I said, with that dollar amount, I mean, that is, that is significant as far as change order percentage, very low. But as far as timing, I think those, the last two years, some of the COVID impacts, workforce, supply chain issues had a lot to play in our work.
I appreciate that now. That does make sense. I guess supposing some of the challenges that we've seen in supply chain and otherwise, cost of expenses, so on and so, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my question is going to go back to the ratepayers and be more specific. I know that we've done a considerable amount of work to get rid of the lead-based pipes in our actual public service systems. The question is, how are we leveraging infrastructure dollars and current dollars in our own budget to assist homeowners, mainly black women, in removing their actual lead pipes in their actual homes?
Yes, thank you for that question. So I'll start off by saying that the, as of today, we have not found any lead in the water, in our water main distribution system, which is a good thing. We're still doing investigations, but our inventory is due in October of next year. So that said, our first course of action is to, is to finalize that inventory for the private side. That's where we're having the difficulties. What is the pipe material on the private side? And until we have a better idea of how much we're talking about, if any at all, we haven't really talked too much about how we're going to replace that lead service.
And then as a follow-up, have you looked to the District of Columbia, which is actually using infrastructure... using infrastructure dollars and funding to actually help with private owners to remove the pipes in their actual, in their actual homes?
Yes, we've actually already applied for assistance from the state. It's just, fortunately, we haven't had to use that at this point. So as far as funding goes, we already have a plan in place and we're just waiting for the state to provide those, that funding. Whether we use it right now or not is, is probably the question, again, going back to, do we actually have lead in our, in our distribution system?
So, Ms. Margarita, I have a committee request with Nina and Nate, a briefing by September 30 in regards to the actual funding sources and how we plan to investigate assistance for homeowners with lead in their actual pipes in their homes.
Councilwoman Ramos, then Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am curious, I don't, I know the director needed a pit stop break, so if we have to wait on this question, let me know. But Baltimore County just announced an increase in their water rates. And I'm interested to know how that impacts us in terms of, are we going to get more money from Baltimore County? Are they just raising the rates for their own edification? What is, they're raising the rates pretty significantly. So I'm curious to know what that impact is, if we're actually going to be getting more money from them? And then also the status of, like, the latest payments from Baltimore County, because I realize that there has been some discrepancies as to what they owe us.
I, I could take that question first and then our fiscal staff can help out too if there's any other additional follow-ups that are needed. But we have a great relationship with Baltimore County. We meet with them monthly to talk about higher level issues happening between both agencies. Their current rate increase is about 4.9% for next fiscal year and, and ours for the same rate as that 3% increase. We, we have, we have cost sharing models, obviously, with Baltimore County in, in order to work off of both the distribution system and then any kind of capital projects that we're sharing. And, and, and through the latest work that we've done as well, is make sure that we're working as smoothly as possible with them to make sure that they're invoicing to the city and, and the charges that we need to allocate towards their costs for different projects are being processed as quickly as possible.
Okay, that didn't answer my question. So they, they increase their, so they, the way that I understand the, the, the calculation is that they get to set their rates. We invoice them for the work that we have to do on the pipes in the county. They pay for any, they pay half of or a portion of the costs for any of the projects that we have to do inside the city that impacts the delivery of their water, okay? So my question is, they, because they set the rates in their own county, which makes zero sense to me, but okay. How, so does that mean that the revenues from those ratepayers are, is coming to us? Or is it just that they're collecting more from their, their residents and are, instead of, I guess they, they generally give the balance between what they collect from their residents and the invoice that we send them, right? So this is basically going to end up being where they are collecting more from their residents in order to give to us based on what we invoice them. Is that correct?
I think that's a probably a better summary than I could have provided, but yes, we, they set the rates and then that's, that determines how much residents are charged in Baltimore County for those services. We have a true-up process that happens every year after the fiscal year closes. So our team works with their financial team and looking at all the financial numbers, going through different project costs, and then determining what the remaining balance is, if it's an exchange of funds between the city to the county, or in some cases, the county to the city. And then through that true-up process, we determine what the total cost was for delivering that service to the county for that fiscal year.
And so my understanding is that they haven't fully paid us recently, or has that not happened? My understanding is that there's like a gap of like $19 million or something that they have not given us.
We'd have to look into that, but we did have some slight delays in billing them for their portion of the capital project, so that could be factored into that overall number. Our team worked as diligently as possible to streamline that process, especially through the new financial system upgrades. And so that just went back online recently, but there could be a discrepancy just off of that process taking some time to fully implement.
And then the State Water Task Force that was, you know, passed, is that, the task force is going to look at that relationship? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and any other, I mean, I hope that they're going to look at sort of the inequity of how the, our system works.
The scope of the task force is fully outlined in the House bill, I believe it was House Board 843 that passed through the legislation.
Yeah, I'm familiar, I'm just trying to get all the public, you know.
And so, yeah, so, so looking at the shared cost models and, and looking at the historical context between the city and the county agreement, that's all included in the legislation.
Do we know the timeline? The timeline, I guess, is the end of the year that they're supposed to give us a report?
January 30th of 2024 is the deadline in the legislation for the task force to make their, to make their recommendation.
And is DPW going to be doing any outreach to the residents to kind of hear what we are thinking about and, and all of that?
We're fully supporting the work of the task force and that's through partnership as well that we have established through Baltimore County and seeing how both departments can help support the task force as they start to get formed.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Burnett, then Cohen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and this is more of a, what's being presented in the budget book question. And so, since 2019, the number of dry weather wastewater backups has increased year over year from 167 to 223, which we know is probably an undercount because most people don't know to call 311 or may not think to call 311 following a backup. But there's no reference to wet weather backups in the budget book or the SOS program, reimbursement funding, or any of these other support programs. What is the, the rationale for removing that data, particularly for a, a type of incident that is incredibly traumatic for folks and impactful from a public health perspective?
The funding line item for that item, for that specific cost, I believe it was presented in the fiscal year 23 budget because that was called out as a significant item. It's still included within the wastewater utility funds, I believe it's just over two point, it's, it's just over $2 million. We could pull up the exact figure for you.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be helpful to both lay, lay it out, but also help us better understand, like, how the funding is being dispersed for those reimbursement cleanup programs, et cetera, to better, so we can actually track, like, what the impact is. And also adding wet weather back in, because those are two different types of events that are reflective of, I mean, it's all reflective of infrastructure issues, but sort of a different type of problem. So I, I just, I think that that should be baked back into the budget. I mean, whatever data you can provide us to parse that out would be helpful. And I can, I'll ask that as an agency, a committee request to provide it for the full committee, so we have an understanding of what the expenditures are for SOS, the reimbursement program, and wet weather, dry weather backups, year to date.
Councilman, that was expenditures for the SOS, the.
Yeah, sewage on site, which I believe is the cleanup program, the reimbursement program that DPW runs, is obviously a second one that the Law Department has, but I'm not, I'll ask that later of law. And then the number of wet weather and dry weather backups that occurred year to date.
Nina, do you have that? First portion?
The expenditures for the SOS sewage on site program and the reimbursement program, as well as wet weather, dry weather backup data. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance, you had a follow-up directly related. And then Dorsey for two.
So to add to the councilman's request, I would like to see service requests related before and after dry weather events. What I'm noticing, and this is an issue that I'm dealing with for a resident now, that we were on notice of a potential dry weather event and it was around a time that we performed a clean out of our actual system. And I'm wondering, have we looked into whether or not some of these causes were happening because of what we did on the, on the public side to some people's actual, to some people's actual basements? So I just want to make sure that we look at our service requests, compare with potential sources too, because there might be an instance where we might have to do due diligence in terms of informing people. And then in addition to that, Mr. Chair, I would like to see how they do their modeling for it too, with wet weather events, to see your modeling. So to see who's impacted, what other events happening, and do you know that you do do modeling for it to see who may potentially outside of the persons who filed 311s who are impacted? So I would like to see how that modeling has updated.
Councilman, what I'm going to ask and, and for some of these longer requests, such as, not to diminish the meaningfulness of them, but like Councilmember Burnett's and yours, for those that have laptops here, if you would say it on the record, but if you would type it up and please email it to me, I want to make sure that we're capturing it and capturing the intent exactly as you had intended. So if, if you guys can type it up and send it to me, we'll make sure it gets in the queue for, for the request. Do you have a specific, Councilmember Burnett or Councilman Torrance, do you have a specific proposed deadline for either of those items?
I mean, it sounds like they have it, so I would say a week. Is that reasonable? It sounds like you have it, it's just not in the book.
I have it right in front of me, it was in my notes, I couldn't find it. So the budget for the SOS program for.
Do you want to hear, do you want to hear it now or do you want it in writing? Okay.
We could submit it in writing, it's at 2.6 million for fiscal year 24, SOS program budget.
Great. And Councilman Torrance, for your request, sir?
I'll put it in writing to make it easier.
Outstanding. Thank you. Okay. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, on street sweeping, am I correct that DPW is not sweeping bicycle facilities?
Yes, that's correct. So the, the bicycle lanes, the street sweepers aren't able to get to the curb, so those bicycle lanes are not swept. On some of the gateways, we do have what we call hoagie people on some of the business districts that do clean out those bike lanes, but the street sweeper is not equipped to fit into those bike lanes.
Our two-way bicycle facilities are the same size as two-way facilities that exist in other cities who have the same equipment that we have. And so I, so I know that our equipment will fit in the two-way facilities, but is still not being used. And whenever I see street sweeping in my neighborhood, you know, like, half the street doesn't get done because of the cars that have to be gone around and the radius that has to be taken to go around each one. I mean, literally, half of any given block doesn't actually get swept, whereas most of the time, fortunately, bike lanes are not obstructed by anything and we could definitely do whole, long, long stretches of road without impediments. So this would apply, like, along the whole length of Cathedral Street and Maryland Avenue, that whole cycle track from Pratt Street all the way to, to Wyman Park. This would apply, it would probably work on Potomac Street down in the Canton area, the big jump around Druid Park when we have that back in place. So I'd like to know that we're actually doing it, or if there's some of the reason why we're not, that we should do that. Because particularly glass, I mean, I can tell you for sure, like, the new cycle facilities along the Hartford Road Bridge are constantly littered with broken glass and it's, I don't understand what's wrong with people. Like, I've had DOT out there to clean it up numerous times and I watch and I see it's cleaned and there's broken glass all over the place, like, two days later. People must be driving across this bridge and just chucking bottles out the window, I don't know. But if we had the help there.
Yeah, so we, I know, we can work with DOT, I, I know one of the concerns, the flaps, when we do get close to the, the bike lanes, the flaps will get stuck into, into our trucks, the brushes.
You're talking about the flex posts?
Yeah, those white flex posts, yes. What did I call it, flags? So we can work with DOT and yourself, if you could give us those locations, we could see how we, we're, we could possibly do it in the future. And which of those streets we are able to do now. So we can work with you and DOT on that.
Okay, great. We'll follow up on that. Thank you. I didn't have another question prepared, but I'm in this really luxurious position of being able to ask two questions at the end of the line here. So I'll just follow up on what Councilwoman Ramos was asking about and the general conversation here of undertaking a new and thorough assessment of how the billing system is structured. A couple of years ago, after I pushed pretty hard for a pretty long time to reinvestigate the concepts underlying the infrastructure fee, we outsourced it to some consultant to respond to it. And I felt like they really missed the mark, like, pretty widely and didn't really, they, like, widely avoided the actual essence of what I was going after and basically had a footnote at the end of the thing, basically saying, oh, we could investigate this thing, but it would take some work, which is exactly why we hired them in the first place. I, I'd like for us to reopen that conversation because it directly gets at the point of, like, the inequity of how the system is structured. Right now, we are, we are yielding twice as much infrastructure fee revenue from low-income small home residents in row home blocks as we are from high-income, large property homeowners. If my block has seven houses on it that are on 100-foot wide properties, we're yielding a whole lot less in infrastructure fees from them than if I live on a similar 700-foot-long block that's got, you know, 35 houses on it or 40 houses on it of a row home type. And I, it's just incredibly inequitable. It means that the, the more sustainable, smaller home, lower income, often people are subsidizing the use of the system by wealthier people who own larger properties and that really needs to be investigated.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think that same concept and ideas reflected in the task force legislation as well too. So some of the work of the task force, as you read through the legislation, will be looking at all of those historical costs, both from what Baltimore City residents pay, what Baltimore County residents pay. And so I think through that work, that same type of conversation, I think, is going to be had on that level as they prepare their recommendations. One thing I will add to there is we did work with the county in issuing an RFP that was recently posted, I think at the start of this week on Tuesday. That's going to essentially go to find a consultant that's going to help the task force accomplish their work. And so that as well, that same kind of concept of looking and studying at this in a more detailed way is reflected as well in that RFP.
I, I appreciate that. I, I feel like in the conversations that I had with our in-house folks, that people really understood what I was conveying and the fundamental concepts under, you know, behind it. And that by pushing it out to a consultant, that got lost. Something in the personal relationship of being able to communicate me to you got lost between me and them. And I want to ensure that we're all bringing that particular thing to the table in a way that it can't be overlooked and has to be investigated with the level of care that I think it deserves. Because again, I think it's pretty clear, when you look at the numbers, that people who live in more sustainable homes and are lower income and often in lesser resourced neighborhoods are subsidizing wealthier, large property, less sustainable homeowners throughout the city as a result of the infrastructure fee as it is today. And I think that needs to be put on the table really clearly. So what do I do to make sure that? So what do I do to make sure that this is really clearly conveyed?
I think it's been perfectly conveyed to our staff. Obviously, as the task force starts to get set up, they're going to have a lot of questions for us, right? As they talk and learn about our system from us and learn about these past historical contexts of what you described. And so at least through the staff-wise, as we're conveying this information to them, that can be passed along. Obviously, once the task force is formed as well, too, I would imagine you'd like to participate in those meetings as well.
I would like to participate in those meetings. How do I get invited to participate in those meetings?
As the task force is formed and set up and their schedule is announced through their work, then we're happy to share that as well with the council members.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So this is a quick question, but it was building on something I had asked last year or raised last year about the water for all, the tax implications of the water for all program. Can, I don't know if it's appropriate for you all, I know we still have folks in finance here to respond, but can we confirm that tenants who are enrolled in the water for all program received zeroed-out 1099s that to correct that the credits are not taxable income following the IRS guidance that determined so? And this was, again, in the context of folks receiving the credit, it was being counted as income, which is pretty much a problem if we're trying to reduce their, the financial impact of water affordability overall.
That's an excellent question, and that's a question that we debated once we were rolling out this program. This is an IRS-related question, related to folks' income and what's taxable and non-taxable. I know the solicitor's office has a legal opinion on that. That may be something that offline we can have that conversation and share. But that's in the realm of our solicitor's office.
Okay, I'll follow up with it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Just a quick follow-up on that, and then I have another question. I thought that I had been told that the solicitor said, because of the guidance from the federal government, that the discount to renters is not considered income. So the question is, has that been conveyed to the renters? And they should not have gotten 1099s, period, end of story. So I guess that's the question, is to try to make sure that that was the case.
I'll take this one. So I think, so we will confirm this, we will follow up to ensure that we confirm this information with you. My understanding is that the discount is actually treated as, potentially treated as a gift and it is under the gift threshold. It's very similar to the guaranteed income program that we have. We actually did just get a waiver for guaranteed income as far as the benefits eligibility, and it took over a year to get that. And now we've set up precedence that I think we can do the same thing with water for all and the benefits received underwater for all. But my understanding, but I will ensure that we get this from the solicitor in writing, is that it is not treated as taxable income, but is instead treated as a gift. And typically, it would be under the gift threshold.
So that the renter doesn't have to report it on the taxes?
Right.
So that'll be a formal request? To get that in writing from the solicitor?
If you would like it as a formal request, it will be.
Might as well add it to the list. Thank you. My other question is, I have a bunch of them. But, okay, I'll just stay with the water for all. The, one of the things that's required in the law that was passed to create water for all, the Water Accountability and Equity Act, is that there's the Office of the Consumer Advocate and then also an oversight board. So I'm wondering, what is the status of both hiring the consumer advocate, which it looks like the budget does have that allocation? But then there's also an oversight committee that's supposed to be appointed. That might be MOGR.
We have our acting chief over that office who can provide some of that information and then--
Come on up. Push it until it turns red. There you go.
Good evening, Councilwoman. How you doing? My name is Mills. It's Ronald Anthony Mills. I am serving as the acting chief of the Water Advocacy and Customer Appeals Office. But I didn't hear the second part of the question.
Sure. So great to meet you. And I know that we, the council, have to approve your appointment, so we're waiting for that to be submitted. So hopefully that will, I guess MOGR knows when that's going to happen. And then the oversight committee is supposed to be formed as well, and so I'm wondering what the status is of that.
To my understanding, that committee needs to be constituted first. The legislation does indicate who the appointees are. So I would defer to the Government Relations Office on who has to constitute the committee.
Nina, is--
So Councilwoman--
Can you hang on one second? Sir, can you say what your position title is again for the record?
Acting Chief of Water Advocacy and Customer Appeals.
Got it. Thank you. Please continue. I apologize for interrupting.
Sure. I'm Mark Homerrick, Chief of Equity and Environmental Justice. That new office is under our office and under the auspices of actually Marsha. We collaborated with Marsha Collins very early on upon bringing Acting Chief Mills on board. And we've submitted all of the paperwork and request details around both the confirmation for the acting chief and also the information regarding the establishment of the oversight committee. So we've been waiting to hear back on those documents. That has happened some time ago. I'm sorry.
How long ago?
That was months ago. It was during the General Assembly. It was as early as February.
So we'll be working with our mayor's office, our government relations to provide timelines on when that's going.
I imagine that Mr. Chair is talking with them now about what that timeline is. I appreciate DPW doing that preliminary work that you were obligated to do. And hopefully, we'll get those submitted relatively soon so that the RLO committee on which I sit can work through that process to get everything going. But thank you, DPW, for going ahead and moving in that direction. And Nina, did you want to provide an update on a timeline? I'm sorry, Director Themelis, my fault. I'm sorry.
No worries. Good evening. So Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The appointee will be submitted in the very near future, likely in one of the next June council meetings. And then we'll move forward from there for the additional appointments.
Okay. Thanks very much for that update. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have more questions, but I'll--
Got it. Councilman Schleifer, you had a very quick and direct follow-up?
Yeah, just for the record, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations did give us a heads-up about a bunch of stuff that's going to be coming down the pike. So we haven't put it out there yet because it hasn't been submitted, but they did make us aware of that in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to follow up on some questions that I asked during our quarterly oversight hearing in the HAC committee. It's going to be related to-- I think this goes back to the dry and wet weather events. This is just a related question and more so a request with the Law Department about how do we create a waiver for latent defects? Because a number of persons did not qualify for this program because we did not want to actually do the cleanup because of the fear of latent defects. Even if we've done an investigation and weren't sure about whether or not it was our fault that the events did happen. So what I would like to do is have a formal committee request, and I'll put this in writing as well, to get a status of the Law Department drafting a waiver form for persons who want to participate in the program, who have a sewage backup, to make sure that the city is clear that if we do clean up your facilities, your basement, so that you don't have to live in those environments, that we are waiving ourselves away from any liability for latent defects. Because that is one of the major issues that's preventing some of our cleanups. In addition to that, I just want to know the status of persons who have successfully gone through the program and how much we have expended. Because I remember last year, we had $2 million again and we only spent less than $100,000. So I just want to make sure that we actualize what that cost looks like. If we have the room for that, we should do it.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. I've been doing this with almost every agency, particularly the larger agencies, but wanted to kind of just cover, I guess, vacancies real quick. So could somebody tell me the number of total budgeted amount of crews in solid waste in '23, FY '23? Do we have that quickly off here?
Is that for--
Total number of employees, yeah. Budgeted for solid waste. Would you guys have that quickly?
I think we can pull that up quickly. Just give us a second.
Just going down my fact pattern, I guess, and then out of that, how many are staff today, like, you know, total to date? And the number of vacancies tied into it. I guess the question that, you know, we've been working with the administration on and just trying to understand, this is not specific to DPW. Obviously, DPW, one of the largest shops that we have in the city, through all the great migration of employees and vacancies, the number of vacancies in DPW is close to 700 from our count. And I know that with this latest round of requests, we're looking to add additional 10 crews and 34 positions. Just really trying to understand and know, one, what was budgeted in '23, where we are today? What's the expectation of what's going to be budgeted in fiscal year '24? And I know that we also had 274,000-plus in savings associated with the repurposing of vacant positions from fiscal year '23 to '24. But the overall goal is just trying to do a examination of the vacancies and trying to better understand the strategy on trying to fill some of those vacancies and if not, try to leverage that cost savings in other ways.
Thank you, Council President. So for the Bureau of Solid Waste for fiscal year '23, we had about 700 positions budgeted in the current fiscal year '23 budget. We currently have 63 vacancies within the Bureau of Solid Waste, which is a 9.14% vacancy rate. If you were to pull out Bureau of Solid Waste and compare that to the other large agencies, giving its size, budget, et cetera, it's performing at one of the best agencies within the city as far as the total vacancy rate. All of that's in, all of that's due credit to our HR team. They've been very proactive in going out and attending all of the in-person hiring fairs that have been available to us, either in working with the council offices or working with the city's DHR office. 37 of those current vacancies are in active recruitment and four of those are currently under a class and compensation, or class and comp action. So that really does reduce the number of positions that are completely vacant within the Bureau of Solid Waste. Like we said in the presentation as well earlier, the staffing levels for routine services has not changed since 2010. And so in order to implement it, in order to first stabilize routine services, you need to increase by 10 crews. In order to get to weekly recycling, you need additional 10 crews. And that's split between the general fund and ARPA funds to start in the first quarter of calendar year '24.
So based off our recruiting and retention efforts of the past and that we've learned over the past year, the expectation is we will be able to not only, you know, budget for, but seat the 10 crews and keep them throughout the year. That's the expectation, right?
That is the expectation. We've done tremendous work since the mayor's announcement on the $10,000 bonus, a retention and recruitment bonus for CDL drivers. We've hired 20 CDL drivers with DPW.
But we're not talking about, these are necessarily CDL jobs, though, correct?
As part of the 10 new crews, I'm sorry, as part of the 20 new crews, that's 20 driver positions as well.
But regarding the other, that's where we see the most turnaround, or that's not true? The other members of the crew.
On the labor positions?
Yes.
We have not had issues as far as recruitment for labor positions. Every time we do a hiring fair and event, that does tend to be one of the more larger groups of candidates that are coming through our process. And so by focusing these efforts, by doing additional hiring fairs right after the new fiscal year starts, I think we're going to be in really good shape as far as filling all of those slots.
So again, we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to carry that throughout the year, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the next round, the next set of questions regarding vacancies is, I think there's about 16 vacancies that are 24 months or more that have been vacant. So as it relates to the aging vacancies in DPW, is there specific strategy to address that, you know, going from '23 to '24? Again, just, you know, for public edification, this is nothing that's specific to DPW. We're seeing this agency by agency, just really interested on jobs that haven't been filled in two-plus years, somewhere upwards of three years, trying to understand the strategy there.
So I think some of those positions you just mentioned might be in our Bureau of Water and Wastewater. So what we've done to address the biggest challenge we've had, which is when we engage with potential candidates, salary does become the number-one issue for them in wanting to have accepted position within DPW. So we've partnered with DHR. We've worked for the past few months of doing a class and compensation study that's going to increase the salaries for our water and wastewater positions starting in July of this year. I think through that effort, you're going to also see an uptick in the number of positions that are able to get filled. As far as the positions themselves, the pin numbers or those line item positions, sometimes for some of those, it just depends on which position the HR specialist places the new hire in. So you could have the same classification with two or three same vacancies. And if they place them in the position that is the most newly open, then that's just going to prolong the life of that one single position that's been sitting on the shelves, per se, for the past year or two.
Understood. Could you, I can provide you the 16 if you don't, if it's hard for you. But could you evaluate those 16 and just provide back to the committee kind of the justification, the breakdown of the expectation of going into '24? You know, obviously, we don't want to continue to carry vacancies year over year. These are the same jobs that we looked at in '22 for fiscal year '23. They're still vacant. Now, we're at a completely different time coming out of COVID. Definitely understand and appreciate the compensation and salary evaluation that you just kind of talked about. Could you provide us kind of overall story on that?
We can look at specifically at those 16 positions. I know right now, we're in active recruitment for a number of our positions. Just within our Bureau of Water and Wastewater, we have about a little over 500 vacancies. But over half of those positions are currently in active recruitment. So it anticipates some of those may be included, but we could take a look specifically at the list of 16 and then provide context to you about each one.
So you want me to provide, I'll just, it would make it easier. I just give, finding 16 we'll give to you.
That's perfect.
And then when we talk about succession, is there a succession program that's been established in DPW? I know that, we've talked about that in the past. Could you guys update us on that?
We do great work within all of our bureaus and agencies. I think our structure itself lends well to succession planning, right? And so we have staff that are at the chief level that are highly qualified to take advancements and steps up within their specific bureau or division within our water and wastewater. What we do is we do a knowledge capture process for any time people are leaving the agency and so that we fully document everything from A to Z on all the projects that they work on, the contacts that they have, and the day-to-day work so that that information gets captured and transferred to the next person that comes in, even if there is going to be a gap in when the next person is able to come into that position. But I think the agency itself lends itself well to having an internal chain of command that bodes well for succession planning.
Is there any way to like have a quantitative snapshot of the success of the succession in DPW? Again, you know, I'm addressing this question directly to DPW, but to all the larger agencies, we're kind of taking the same line of questioning. I know there's been some work in recs and parks. Not sure how much we're centralizing some of the good work in other departments if it's kind of spooling over. But is there a way to quantify, I guess, the work that you have been able to do as relates to succession?
We could look at those numbers within our Bureau of Water and Wastewater and see what information we're able to pass to you through that work. The policy that our staff put in place there within the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, they've shared it as well, too, with other agencies, both internal to DPW and outside. But there's obviously great lessons to learn, I think, with all of the agencies. And so any information like that, we'd be happy to accept that and learn from them as well, too.
I know it's definitely a challenge, but I think it's something that-- I know it's definitely a challenge, but I think it's something that we should kind of just make part of like the budget process of like understanding and knowing because it, it provides us as well as administration, anybody, a purview as to like what's working and what's not working from a succession perspective. So definitely interested in that. And then the last question is around, I know there was some innovative work that you were attempting to do around unbundling some of the larger contracts to assure minority women-owned vendors had access to start building capacity through DPW. How's that going? Could you kind of provide us the background on where we are with that and, and any updates on it?
Good evening, Council President. Yes, to give you an update on the unbundling initiative, that's being managed by one of our chiefs of officer boards and commission, Deana Joyce. And part of that project is to unbundle these multimillion dollar projects, break them down so that we can identify at least five general contractors to be primed for the future, local businesses, minority women business-owned businesses to be able to compete with some of the, the larger contractors in the, in the community. Our expectation is the bids should be going out in the second week of June, which will be next week. We're just wrapping up some of the, tweaking up the solicitation to go out for bid for advertisement and then from there, we have a schedule and hopes of having a war by the fall. And then with that, with, if you want, how the pilot works would be, there will be a prime contract whose responsibility to do mentor protege.
Yeah.
As well as to execute the contract on a, like a construction management type of project where they're required to help them with administration, how to navigate our procurement process within the city of Baltimore, in addition to helping them get access to finances from bonding, from bonding to loans, to help with mobilization costs and things that are stored, as well as to help them, walk them through the project management of those projects so they can be successful. In turn, in the end, we will identify at least five GCs to then be able to bid on prime contracts for the future, hopefully to be able to bid between one million to ten million dollar projects in the future.
Got it. So is the, the bidder the prime today, they order, they get to select the sub that would go into this program?
Yes, and so what we're doing is we had, we had one networking event where we're the primes who are maybe.
It was like a matching type of situation?
Yeah, like a, a networking, matching prime or, or sometimes subs with subs, they may want to joint venture, or they may want to bid on other projects together. And so that prime will be in, part of their process was to do networking events to encourage them and also they would probably have some subs in place in addition to, in their bid package to the board of estimates.
Now, did we put a ceiling on the type of sub that would be able to go in the program like this, like one of the five, as far as like gross rev or anything like that?
No, any, hopefully.
Anybody who's not a, anybody who's not a prime based off of certain characteristics or how does that work?
Anyone can bid as a prime.
Correct.
If they qualify.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about the, the business we're attempting to target.
Oh, what's up?
Do we put a characteristic ceiling on, you know, they can't be over this size or?
Well, it wasn't size, what we did was we focused on our, our end goal, so I think the goal is at least forty-nine percent has to be minority women businesses and we're trying to encourage them that they're looking for businesses in the local community specifically so that we can build local businesses, as we all know that helps with the economics of the city. But there wasn't a, a dollar threshold in the, in the solicitation as relates to subcontractors.
And again, the prime gets to select the sub, obviously.
Correct.
And then when that project is successful, that sub, we're trying to push them into potentially doing their own.
Correct.
Bid.
Correct. And there'll be a compliance component to the pilot to ensure that they're successful, they're meeting the, the metrics and the thresholds that we set to ensure success.
Now, is the technical support, the expectation for the technical support only on the prime or will the city develop services, outreach and support to the sub eventually that will become a prime during that process?
Yes, both. There'll be technical support from the prime as well as support through the officer boards and commissions and their compliance program and the compliance program under, in, in the Department of Public Works to ensure that they're, they understand our process as it relates to procurement, in addition to how to, we also have a, a small business training program that they're all required to participate in as well. It's an eleven-week program.
That's where the, does the pool have to come through that program?
Yes, that's, that's going to be.
That's the key. So everyone has to come through that program, right now, remember? Okay. Now, coming from it, when they graduate and hopefully be able to now compete, what's the bonding capacity that we expect or it just depends on the job? There's no specific criteria for that?
It would depend on the job, you know, you will have a bonding capacity, you've got to be bonded if they qualify for a two million dollar project, you have to bond for that, right?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So whatever the project amount is, their payment performance bond, they have to be able to meet the threshold required under those solicitations.
But again, there's no characteristics in the program of what we would want them to be able to bond at?
The goal is by the time they leave, they should be bondable at least at a million dollars?
A million dollars, got it. And then last question regarding the bonding program outside of this initiative, which I think is great, really excited to start it out and kind of see it expand. Are there other like innovative ways to support bonding capacity for minority women, local health companies that you guys have looked at? If not, I ask you to kind of do, I know there's some innovative ways in other places where the municipality or the state kind of helps support, particularly from a bonding capacity perspective. Do we do anything like that here from a DPW?
So in the eleven-week training program, we do discuss it and talk about how to get access to bonding, what are the financial criterias that?
But nothing specific as it relates to access to, to capital or resources to do it?
So there is a, actually a minority firm that we do work with and they actually, I think that firm does one of the courses during that training. And my goal in the relationships and the conversations, well, the, the relationship building that I'm encouraging officer boards and commissions to, to have with him is to figure out ways for how he can support the city and his pilot in addition to how they can get more access to bonding capacity through his, his company.
Like potentially a pooling type of solution?
Right.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director and team, do we have the capacity to determine whether or not any street received mechanical street sweeping on any given day? Chief?
Yes, we have AVL on all of our vehicles, so we should know, you know, if that sweeper or if a sweeper went down a particular street.
And that applies to any given one hundred block, correct?
Say it again.
That, that applies to any given one hundred block?
Yes.
Okay. One, thank you for getting that technology in place. I know that had been an issue in the past, so that's great to hear. Two, as you are aware, chief, sometimes a block may not be, may not receive mechanical street sweeping because there's too many parked vehicles. In those instances, I know that DOT is not necessarily coordinating directly with DPW and vice versa on that. So there doesn't seem to be a process by which a citizen receives a parking citation because they were in violation of the signed regulations? And a correlation as to whether or not the mechanical street sweeping occurs? Does that make sense? So I could be parked on a block and the street sweeper may not come, but I could still receive a citation?
No, we, I'm not, I'm not going to say one hundred percent no, but unlikely because we, we work closely with DOT to let them know which, which routes we're completing every day, so they know the routes. If for some reason we don't have a truck or a driver that day and we know we're not going to get to that route, we let them know early in the morning so they can redirect their resources to streets where we are going to, go to sweep. So we have, we do have a relationship with them.
I'm listening to you, but I keep glancing at my dear friend, Chief Kason, who's the only person in the room who's an expert in both mechanical street sweeping and parking enforcement. Theoretically though, it, it is possible that a, a vehicle could be cited even though street sweeping didn't occur. So I have this happen about six or eight times per year, but theoretically that's possible, Chief Kason?
Any, anything is possible. So yes, oh, we could be coming at a different time than the, the enforcement.
So question is, is there a process by which a constituent could receive a citation and could challenge that and say mechanical street sweeping didn't actually occur? Because if we're, for whatever reason, we're not providing that service on that hundred block on that given day, the common sense dictates that that person should not be subject to a citation. So is there, so if someone attempts to abate a parking citation, they usually reach out to their council member, we reach out to Chief Mayfield at, at DOT, we say, we think this is an erroneous citation. In this instance, it's very clear that they're guilty, right? Because they parked next to a street sweeping sign during those hours, but street sweeping didn't actually occur. There's no recourse. I know this is a bit of a one-off, but is there, is there a way we could set up a, some type of process that exists between DOT and DPW to provide relief specifically in the form of abatement of the parking citation? Were that to be the case, that they were correct and mechanical street sweeping did not occur? I, I really think this is a question for the, for the CIO because I'm, or the deputy CIO because I'm cross-cutting a lot of things here. Or if you could come up to, if, if you could come up to the mic. Thank you. And Chief Kason, thank you. Appreciate you.
So thank you for the question. I think this is one that we will likely have to take offline.
Sure.
Because I think it's a theoretical question, right? If there is signage that says that you cannot park in an area and there is a car that is in violation of said sign, then, you know, should they or should they not still receive a parking ticket? I think is up for debate, even if the service did not occur. So I think, one, we can see what other jurisdictions do in those cases and if this is a best practice. But I think it's a theoretical conversation we should probably have with the council offline.
Great. Is that, is that something the administration could look into in terms of what other jurisdictions do?
Yes.
By say September thirtieth?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, not a high priority item. Appreciate you all. Councilman Glover.
My question is, what do, what are we doing with, I know that the city, we're using like temporary employees to, from like staffing agencies to take the lead on some of the workload that we have. I also understand, from what I'm hearing, just from some of the workers, that some of these individuals that are coming on board too, that are from staffing agencies are, like the drivers are making maybe twenty-four to twenty-seven dollars an hour. I don't know if that's true or not, I'm just asking you guys if that's true. And that the, the actual city employee is making like twenty-one dollars an hour. So is, can you confirm that?
So are you referring to the contract employees?
Yes.
From, that help us with the trash routes?
Yes.
So the, the vendor actually pays the salary of those employees, so we, we, we don't, we don't set the salaries for them? For temporary employees that we have on, on our books, our seasonal maintenance aides or community aides, they are paid the same salary as the, of, of our permanent employees without the, the benefits.
Okay, so we, so we have two type of like temporary employees?
Yes.
Okay. And being though the city, we have so many like vacancies, are we like taking the initiative to like hire those individuals that are with those staffing agencies or is it a contract where, you know, we can hire that individual based on the fact that right now they're getting paid from the city of Baltimore to provide services for us?
Yes, so the, the employees from the vendor, we are not allowed to, to hire them, but the other temporary workers are coming through the MoED program. So they have to work six months with MoED and then at the end of that six months, we can bring them on. So those are the community aides and the seasonal maintenance aides, they're, they're going through the MoED program.
Okay, so it was a six, so it's six months and they're hired permanent after six months?
Yeah, so Hire Up is the program, I was trying to just get the name of the program. So through Hire Up, the MoED brings in the candidates, they work for us for six months. After the six months, if we have a vacant position to put them in, we will. And that's how we've been filling a lot of our laboring positions through that program.
Okay. And do you, do you guys work closely with the Clean Core program, being as though they're out in the neighborhood cleaning up as well? Like are we recruiting any of those workers that are working with that program? I know they just started, but if there's been conversations where, because to me, it's kind of sort of like a training tool for them to then become, you know, DPW solid waste workers or even CDL drivers. Have you guys had like any conversations with planning in reference to how we can allow those men and women that work for the Clean Core program to adjust and come over to DPW for permanent employment?
So right now, we're just a supporting agency through Clean Core, but I know part of that program, it has a succession plan so that at the end of the program, if vacancies are available, they're able to, you know, work with DPW. So that is part of the Clean Core program.
And, and also with the Clean Core program, when Clean Core is out taking care of those issues, those complaints, do they like send any kind of like pictures or anything over to DPW so that we don't like, I guess, double do the work? You know, is there times where it's though, just say for instance in my district, somebody can request a three-one-one call to get something like a dirty street cleaned. And if Clean Core were passed to clean the actual street, is there any kind of record that you know the Clean Core would like submit things over to you guys and say, you know what, this complaint for this particular number has been TCO, has been taken out of, you know, the system and they have it where they can show you proof?
So they don't provide that information to us? I'm sure they're providing it to the Clean Core managers. We have a bi-weekly meeting with Clean Core to talk about where those crews are going to be working in those particular weeks to make sure or to try to mitigate what you're saying so that we're not going to the same areas where they're working. In general, the Clean Core, each of the project managers have a specific area that they can work in, they're not in the entire community. So we know in general where they're going to be, but we don't know on what particular day they're going to be there.
Got you.
So we have to work closely with the Clean Core managers to make sure that we're not all in the same areas at the same time.
And, and the reason why I ask that question is because I, I am involved with some of the Clean Core programs that's in my district where, you know, at times I helped them even clean up, but what I've seen was that some of those crews go out to clean the gateways and what they would do is they would clean the trash can itself, but the trash around the actual can is being left. And from my understanding, it was told that they cannot pick up that trash. So it's left for DPW solid waste drivers and labors to come pick it up, where to me it's like the feet and the purpose of them coming to clean a can out, but the trash that's surrounding the can, they can't pick it up. And I don't know if it's a liability issue with the, with the city to say that, you know, Clean Core program took somebody trashing something, might have been in a trash can that was valuable to someone, I don't know if that's the reason why. But I do know that trash has been left behind, where the Clean Core program had been there to remove the trash. And now it's there for animals to probably bust it open or maybe someone else to tear it open or for DPW to come pick it up.
So part of the Clean Core program, they, they have, they have their own haulers. So the actual team members that clean up, they, they clean up the trash, they leave their bags for their hauler, the Clean Core hauler to come around to pick up. So that is part of the program. So if you see those bags, a hauler should be around at some point that day to pick them up. But the crew itself do, do not have hauling capabilities. They only clean.
Well, I've been there to, like I said, to witness them picking up the trash and things of the nature. I just think there needs to be more of a coordination between Clean Corp and solid waste because somewhere down the line, like we're like, we're missing something. And it's only because I'm there to physically like witness it for myself and help those Clean Core guys like pick up the trash in the neighborhood. But when I asked them like, why we're not picking up the trash around, around the can, it's because they were told that they can't pick up the trash around the can. And to me, that's. And to me, that's a waste of money that's going to the Clean Core program. So, maybe, if you could write down, maybe we need to bring Clean Corp together with DPW to try to figure out, like, how can we work together to establish some unity in getting this, these, these trash and stuff cleaned up in our neighborhood? I still don't even understand why the Clean Core program with the planning, as opposed to coming to solid waste. Like, we, we know better as opposed to planning on how to, to get those trash up in our neighborhoods. But if we can piggyback on that to find out some way that we can communicate with each other, so you guys won't be going back over something that's already been done, or they're basically saying they can't pick up something that should be picked up. So, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Yeah. I just want to, just to follow up with that. We do have those meetings already with, with the Clean Core managers. We meet with them biweekly to talk about any concerns, and I'll raise that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Concern in your area, so we can try to correct that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I had my, my few remaining questions actually have to do with a few of the service numbers. I just needed additional clarification on, let's start with Service 663. So, you mentioned earlier in the hearing related to the Rubicon execution. I believe I saw in the budget book for Service 663, there was an increase in the technology for route optimization. And I just wanted to know what that additional increase was.
This is the $460,000 line item to install AVL technology on our solid waste fleet.
Yes, sir.
That's also to better track.
Yes.
Our vehicles and assets, and use that data and information to optimize.
So, that is different from the Rubicon technology for the, for the trucks?
No. So, it is, it is Rubicon. So, Rubicon provides the route optimization. They also provide the, the equipment that goes on the truck. So, they, they give us the AVL equipment, also cell phones that have the mapping, and we're able to capture data from that. So, that is all a part of the Rubicon software that we receive, and so that's what this funding is for.
Okay. And so, what was, oh, it's a continuation?
To continue, yes.
Okay.
Because we still have to, even though we paid for the optimization, we still have to continue to pay for the equipment and to pay for the software.
Okay. Is that going to be a additional cost coming each year, or is this just a one-time cost of the $400,000?
No, it's going to be ongoing.
Okay.
Because we have to keep the, we have to keep maintaining the software.
Okay. So, that's an additional $400,000 every year for that software?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. The next one, I had to ask about the consultant contract for the biohazard waste management team. I know that that was something that we had started as a pilot program. I think it was in, in my district, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, I didn't know if you were going all across the city. But can you speak to the strategy of that bio-waste, that bio-waste consultant kind of going across the city? And are we going to use the same one that we are doing now? And if not, has the RFP actually been put out on the street so that we can get additional bidders to that consultant agreement?
Yes. So, that, that bio, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, he, he also, he has bio-waste, and we're talking about biohazard, so it's just a mix-up. So, we, we, right now, we are still using the same vendor. We work closely with, with homeless services and to clean up the encampment spaces, and also when we get service requests for like needles and human waste, things like that in alleys, we also use the service. So, right now, it's, it is a citywide service. We're calling, I mean, we use it citywide. It's not just for your, your district.
Okay.
But it's mainly for cleaning up some of the, the encampments, and also heavily areas where there's heavily discarded needles and, and other bio, biohazardous waste.
I appreciate that. Are we going to use the same vendor as, so the only reason why I'm asking is because I know there were, while the vendor did a good job, there were some instances where the vendor was not able to kind of, from a capacity perspective, get to all of the encampments throughout the city that needed cleaning and needed biohazardous waste management. I'm wondering if there can be an opportunity with this funding that's appropriated in the budget, if we can kind of expand our contractors to maybe two to three, so that we can really expand our opportunities throughout the city for this cleanup, this type of cleanup. And it's something that DPW sanitation workers can't do. And so, I'm wondering if there can be some sort of flexibility there with our number of contractors that we actually bring on.
So, that is something that we can, we can look into, but just, I, I just want to reiterate, reiterate that for the, for the public right-of-way cleaning, we, we can handle that through this contractor. For the encampment cleaning, it's a process, so we can't just send them out there to clean up. We have to make sure we are providing the services through homeless services for the residents in those areas, making sure that we're not getting rid of their personal items. So, we, we work closely with them to ensure that we are only picking up the things that we should be picking up. So, that, that, that's part of the, where you may see the, the lag, the timeframe, where they're not going out right-of-way to clean it up. It's not necessarily on the vendor. It's the process that we have to go to to ensure that we are, you know, being respectful of people's personal items.
And I appreciate that. You know, I'm more focused on like our public spaces. I know CIO Leach, we have talked about this on a number of occasions, where we have needles and human waste within our public spaces. And so, not necessarily kind of focusing on the encampments, but the larger kind of public strategy that we had talked about, I think it was like 10 months ago. So, thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple actually follow-up questions from some questions that my colleagues had. And so, I'll try to be very brief with those, just because they're mostly follow-ups. First was regarding a lot of questions, a lot of questioning that I appreciated from the, from President, from the Council President regarding hiring. I was really, really curious about retention. We know that we are trying to fill all these positions. It sounds like we're doing a pretty good job finding folks to fill those positions, but if we continue to lose folks in those positions, we're sweeping sand at the beach. We'll always be trying to save, solve exactly the same problem. What are we doing, first, do we know what our retention rate is in, in these positions?
We can look up that number. I know we did a quick analysis just for CDL drivers, and it is a, the majority of our, our staff that are voluntarily leaving within their CDL positions have well over five years within DPW. That was just a quick analysis we could do before this hearing, but we can look at that comprehensively. What I will say is, we offer some great training programs, incentives to our employees. We cover half of their tuition costs. We're constantly encouraging them to seek professional development opportunities, and, and we're so innovative with our workforce development programs, like Be More Wise, YH2O, that we have this ongoing pipeline of, of candidates and people that are able to fill and take over these jobs as well, too.
That, that's great. I think the more we know about people leaving, I think the more we can actually do about it. And that leads me to the second sort of follow-up to the follow-up. That being, do we do exit surveys, and do we have insights on why folks are leaving?
So, we just, so yeah, so we have an HR staff member that's assigned to do exit interviews with staff as they leave. So, we're collecting that information now, trying to learn from, you know, what are we recognizing through that interview process, exit interview process, and using that information to then go back to the supervisors or the managers over that unit, and sharing that information with them as well, too.
Can you share that with us? Can I make that a request of the committee? That'd be helpful.
We, we can pull up the information that could be included in there. I got to, we, we'll have to look and see if the data and the information they're collecting through that.
Sure. Got that.
Nate, Nina, you guys got that? Thank you. Councilman, are you good?
I'm still, still going. That was mostly follow-up. The question I had was around Patapsco. So, we're doing capital projects there, 70.7 million for the wastewater treatment plant and headworks, and 102 million for lead service line inventory replacement. I imagine all these are very important, necessary changes, upgrades that need to happen. I know, given the history at the site, we, we've had effluent coming out of that site, and a lot of what we learned about that was around staffing. So, I'm curious what we've done to improve staffing there. Where are we with regard to staffing up? And just more, more about that site.
As far, as far as our staffing, particularly at the, at the treatment plant, it goes back to what we've talked about in the past, is, is how do we attract that talent? We've had a, a drain in the, in our talent pool for the last several years. So, certainly that salary compensation study would certainly help us in attracting more people and keeping the people that we do have. And then we have, as the Deputy Director had mentioned, pipelines that we've put in place, YH2O, the Be More Wise program. We're looking at possibly expanding the Be More Wise to not only have a pipeline for potential new employees, but also for our current employees. And to get them the training that they need, not only to, for professional growth, but to also to help operate the plant. So, we have that going on, as well as our, our existing purchase programs and additional vocational or professional training as needed.
What are our vacancy rates for our positions at Patapsco and Back River today? I know we had some issues before, but we've been working to fill those.
We can provide that as a follow-up item, just specifically for those two plants. We'd have to drill down and look at the numbers, but we can provide it for those.
Well, if you're asking, I'd love it for, for, for the wastewater, water wastewater treatment, but certainly for those two plants, knowing that we've had issues historically, mostly due to our ability to staff, that would be helpful. Thank you. I'm going to try and sneak in another question before the chair notices.
Councilman Schleifer.
So, you guys put out a tweet, which I'll read, and my question's going to be on that for some explanation. There's been a lot said about recycling pickup in Baltimore. However, the mayor's brung back recycling program after the program has been paused, but has expanded the program from 41,000 households participating in 2009 to now more than 170,000 households have access to recycling. So, there's a lot to unpack there. So, I'm just trying to get some clarity. How many households are recycling?
As we've, thank you for the question. As we presented in the slide and the, and the presentation to you all, we have rolled out 170, 170,000 of those blue carts. And comparing that to the previous program, that was 41,000 of the yellow bins that were, that were deployed out. So, like we mentioned, it's a 315% increase in the, the participants in that program when you compare from, from the start of the one-plus-one program to what it's at currently today.
Well, so, again, you're saying that 170,000 households now have access to recycling. Were you not picking up, were you not driving past those houses to pick up recycling before the blue cans were there?
I remember the one-plus-one program was an opt-in program, so residents would purchase those bins, and, and that was part of, as well of the crews and the routes at the time.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going back to when the pilot program of recycling started in 2009, because if we start working on those metrics, the metrics right now are not going to look very good. I'm just talking about, it says that more than 170,000 households have access to recycling now. This was touted as a success, that now 170,000 households have access to recycling. Did they not have access before you rolled out the blue bins?
Like we had mentioned in the presentation, if you had 41,000 bins that were out during that same time, that's 25% of the city. We've mentioned in the presentation that that's not an equitable program. Right now, recycling is offered to, to those residences and those households, so that's why those are 170,000 carts as well out, that are out in the, in the community.
So, when I look at your presentation that you guys laid out, you said there's 1,688 stops per crew, and there's 88 crews, which equal 148,000. So, I'm trying to understand, how many people in the city are currently recycling? How many households? Is it 170? Is it this 148? Is it less than that? Because when, when, when the public reads a quote, a tweet like this, this was touted as a success, and, I mean, it's misleading at best that now they have access to recycling. I mean, people had access to recycling prior to these blue bins being rolled out. So, how many households are physically recycling on any given, any given collection?
We can look at the numbers and provide that specific, the, the number there. On the slides that we presented, when you're talking about the 88 crews, that gets us back to, to weekly recycling. The number of stops per recycling crew goes down from 2,600 to now 1,688. I don't, I don't know if that was the number you were reflecting there. But on the fiscal year 2024, as we implement and mobilize those 20 additional crews, the number of stops would go down. That was the 1,688 figure.
So, you're saying that if we looked at the truck data, it would show that the trucks are physically stopping and collecting recycling in front of 148,000 households? That's what you, that's what your presentation showed. Is that accurate?
I, every day you pick up, and that's an excellent question, I think it's, I'll try to answer it this way. We, we look at the average, if you will. We do trash, for example, weekly. There's an industry average for folks pushing out their cans. What it is every day, it's different every day, because you may have someone that went on vacation. You may have someone that forgot to roll out their bin. You may have someone that pushed their bin out later, after the truck has come. You will have that for trash and recycling. You may even have someone that forget, it's their week, right? And so, each route, each day is different. You may have a rainy day. You may see less pushing out, because folks don't want to go and come rather and pull out their carts. So, traditionally in the industry, you see about 85 to 90% push out for trash. And, and typically, in the industry, you see a 65 to 70% push out for recycling. And that's why, when you look at the graphs that we presented, and when you look at trash crews per route, the industry standard is 950, and the industry standard for recycling is 1,300. And it's because normally more residents forget or choose not to push out recycling carts more often than trash carts. Now, hopefully, that makes sense.
No. So, Director, it doesn't, what doesn't make sense to me is that I'm, I'm really asking a very basic question. I'm not asking, hey, last Tuesday, how many people recycled? We're talking about on a rough estimated time. I understand some days it rains, some days it snows. I get that. It's, it's a pretty, it should be a pretty reasonable, like, question that you should have the tip of your tongue, like, how many people are recycling? Because when I look at just the past, from this, when this term started.
Can I jump in for a second? Can you, can you, because I want to help you get an answer, and want to help the director answer you. Can you phrase the question in one sentence for me? Please.
How many households in Baltimore City, on average, are recycling per week?
Thank you.
We'll get that number to you.
So, in your presentation, you guys are saying, you're, you're, you're testifying before us that you need $40 million in this service, which, mind you, is a 33% increase over what it was just a few years ago. When we started this term, Service 663's budget was about 30 million. It's now 40 million. We are asking the taxpayers to pay an additional $10 million a year for less services, and you guys are telling us that the reason for that is because so many more people are recycling. Now, the tonnage collected doesn't reflect that, because the recycling tonnage is down. That is according to your data and your spreadsheets. That is according to your data and your spreadsheets. You, you guys put before this, this committee, I believe in good faith, that the data we should be considering for the budget that you're asking us for, that one hundred and forty eight thousand households are recycling. One hundred and forty eight thousand households in Baltimore City are not recycling. According to previous hearings before this council, you guys have told us how few households are recycling and how we have to make improvements in that, and I agree. But how can we consider this budget and giving you guys over six hundred million dollars of taxpayer money, asking each household to kick in, on average, about three thousand dollars, instead of taking their family on a Disney trip? We're asking them to kick that in towards DPW's budget? And you can't tell us how many people are physically recycling and that whether or not the data you presented to us tonight is correct, that these trucks are actually making a hundred and sixteen hundred and eighty eight stops per route, per crew?
I think, I mean, that's a great question. What we can tell you is this, we rolled out one hundred and sixty nine thousand, approximately one hundred and seventy thousand carts. Each day that we have pickup, some customers choose to push out their recycling carts, some customers don't. What we can provide you is an average on what happens in a given route or in a given week. We can, we can get what our Rubicon report is saying. But again, you know, for example, I was on vacation. I, during my, my Wednesday biweekly pickup, me and my family was out of town. We did not push out our route. And so, there's, you know, for those actual numbers, we would have to give you that. What we have in our report and what we always show is what's industry standard, because that changes route to route, week to week.
Right, but the industry standard in Maryland and the United States is that these pickups occur. Even through COVID, the pickups were occurring in the other jurisdictions. What I'm trying to understand here, as a fiscally responsible member of the city council, is what numbers are accurate and what numbers aren't accurate? And you're asking us to approve a budget off of talking points, industry standards. When I look through historically at the information you provide, nothing ever adds up. I have the press conference right here, the press release that you guys put out when you're releasing the carts. Mayor Brandon Scott and Department of Public Works announced plan to begin distribution of new recycling carts to more than one hundred and ninety thousand city households beginning Tuesday, September 28th. Did you roll out to one hundred and ninety thousand? Did you roll out to one hundred and seventy thousand? I mean, how do we know any of this information? How do we know what we're paying for?
So, so this is gonna, we're gonna end this, we're gonna come back to this line of questioning, because I know your questions haven't been answered, Councilman. And I wanna make sure that other members have an opportunity to ask a question. So, Director, I'm gonna ask you to respond to that last piece from the Councilman, and then we're gonna move down the line, and then we're gonna come back to the Councilman. I suspect we'll be here for a while.
No, thank you. We purchased about one hundred and ninety thousand or so carts, and we can give you what those purchases are. Also, when we rolled out carts, we had some residents that refused the carts, some residents that wanted to go to smaller sized carts. And then we also had residents that became vacant, vacant properties and things of that nature. So, we can try to get you the closest number that we had based upon all those scenarios from when that press release was released, for what is actually happening now that we rolled out all the carts and they're on the street. So, we can provide that information to you, Councilmember.
All right, Councilman, we're gonna come back to you, I promise. Councilman Glover. Thank you. I'm gonna skip my round. Council President Mosby.
I'll skip my round as well.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
I'm just gonna end it, because this has been a long evening. My question is to the administration. Succession, as Director Mitchell is leaving us soon, where are we in terms of his replacement, but also the search? Also, are we looking at internal candidates as well? I just wanna make sure the public's aware of where we are in terms of his replacement.
Thank you for that question. So, this is an active recruitment. So, we are, we currently have an active posting for a new director of the Department of Public Works, and we've had an active search, I think, for at least two to three months. We've received a couple of candidates that are interested in the role, that we've interviewed. But we are likely to work with a search firm to really identify the right type of candidate that can manage the utility and do all the work that we need our DPW director to do. So, we will be making an announcement about an interim while we conduct a nationwide search for a new director.
Thank you, Madam CEO. I'm gonna leave, but I just wanna say thank you for your service, Director Mitchell, and to the DPW staff before I leave. I do value that your service that you provide each and every day, down to the persons who pick up my actual trash and recycling each day. I just wanna make sure that I highlight that we have made successes since I've joined the council in terms of even water billing. When I pulled the data from my office, we haven't received a water bill complaint in six months. And the one complaint that we did receive was resolved within five hours, which to me, before I got here, I had over two hundred outstanding complaints from the previous council person that we were still vetting and moving through. What I wanna know, and this is the deeply rooted question, while progress has been made, what is the current plan to maintain the culture shift that I'm seeing in the agency so that it is not lost? And I just wanna make sure that is a question that can be answered, because what I don't want is progress lost, because I enjoy not receiving complaints about water bills. I enjoy understanding how we can fix problems in this agency. But I just wanna make sure that the culture shift that we're seeing, that's slowly being embedded, is not lost.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. One of the areas there that I'm gonna highlight is our strategic plan that we're getting ready to roll out here in the next few weeks. I will say, the plan itself was fully develop our staff. We've engaged and talked with staff all up and down, every single level of the organization, to come up with these essentially four overall arching goals that we plan to implement in new projects, new initiatives, new commitments, not just for next fiscal year, but then ongoing. And a lot of that work, I think, is gonna be continuously worked on. It's investing in our staff. It's building those trusted relationships with our customers, providing better customer service. We've done a lot of great work around water billing, as you mentioned. It's being financially responsible, and it's optimizing and improving our efficiencies. I think those four core principles are embedded and ingrained within DPW. A large credit is the man sitting next to me for bringing those core principles in as well, too, and talking with our staff daily. When we meet with our staff every other week, our new employees that are starting with DPW, we share this information with them, we set those levels of expectation, and we let them know that these are gonna be the driving four core principles of this agency, not just today, but in future years.
Thank you. I also wanna say that we've seen drastic improvements in the water. Last year or two years ago, we had tons of questions from us about this. And the fact that we have had zero questions about it, other than what the Councilman just brought up, is really impressive. So, please extend to your, to Ms. Curtis, Ms. Horn. They are just excellent. So, I have had some complaints, but they're just resolved immediately. So, I do appreciate that. That's huge, huge. My question is around Service 674. The inlets cleaned, inlets routinely inspected on a quarterly basis. The book also says that we have fifty two thousand inlets. So, there's no way that we'd be able to proactively inspect fifty two thousand inlets by only inspecting fifteen hundred every quarter. So, I'm wondering how we're gonna get to fifty two thousand inlets? I realize that, I don't know if I've shared this, but when we were, Mr. Hicks, who, by the way, is my constituent, and I just think the world of Mr. Hicks, was proactively doing the inspections around the inlet project that we did for understanding the scope of the problem of this flooding on Hindland and Thirty Fifth Street. He discovered that, and also Kim Grove was here, I think she's still here, thank you, Kim, that the twelve hundred inlets or so that were in that area had to be looked at again, because the map he was using still had Memorial Stadium on it. So, he really, obviously, that map has been updated, but the fact that there hadn't been those kinds of inspections for a while to understand what was going on is important. So, again, the question ends up being, we have all of these inlets. Hopefully, that fifty two thousand inlet number is accurate now that Mr. Hicks and the team have done that work. I know that he's done also that work for Frederick Road as well, or Frederick Avenue as well. So, there's that piece, but also just the fact that we're trying to proactively, you know, inspect them, but we can't do it with doing just fifteen hundred quarterly. So, how is that supposed to work? What are we supposed to be doing?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that question.
Sure.
So, it's really a twofold answer. One is we have, as we've talked about over the last few hours, is just the manpower and the equipment, which we need to, in order to do these investigations from the, from our utility maintenance division. And then also is doing some, some data analytics on where are we seeing recurring flooding? Where are we prioritizing our inspections? What should we be cleaning first? So, it's really a matter, it's really a twofold answer.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question. So, I'm trying to figure out if we're, as we move forward, are we changing this indicator to say that we're doing routine inspection? Or are we, maybe I should change the scope of the question in terms of, is this being, this fifteen hundred is really our priority area? So, like Thirty Fifth and Hillen, Frederick Avenue, Guins Falls? Like, those are our major flood areas, and that's what we're doing here?
Right, it's really a prioritization. We're not gonna be able to get to all of them at one time.
Gotcha.
But we do need to staff up and have our equipment. And at the same time, where are we seeing the problems? And let's focus on those problems and then get the rest of the system.
Okay, so, the answer to the question is, we're not possibly getting to the fifty two thousand inlets. All we're doing right now is just prioritizing the major flood areas so that those are addressed proactively, but also, at least in my area, we also have our residents programmed to, you know, dial three one one on, on the inlets as well. So, that, but the three one ones aren't reflected here. This is just being proactive. So, you're just prioritizing basically the flood areas.
That, and we are, we are, again, bringing on more equipment and more staff. So, that should increase, but not to the level of doing every, every inlet in that, in that certain amount of time.
Right, but this, and then this is inspection, not just cleaning, it's inspection, just making sure that, like.
Yes.
Everything is working out, you know, just fine. Right, okay. Obviously, one of the things that the Councilman and I have talked about is just working through what other, what other ways we could deal with flood mitigation, which I'm gonna talk about with the planning department. And obviously, I think because of the emphasis on Thirty Fifth and Hillen and on Frederick Avenue, I think the department, well, the whole city, has really been thinking about the best way to be proactive so that we can minimize the flood issues. I'm super excited about the progress that we have on, on getting Hillen and Thirty Fifth done in terms of mitigation work. The neighbors are excited, like, we're really ready to roll. So, I really appreciate that. But also thinking a little bit more proactively around, again, the inlets, but also looking at where our flood areas are. Again, the major flood, pluvial flood, pluvial flood areas are where we piped rivers as we developed. That's, you know, a fact, because we asked the planning department to do that analysis. And also thinking about looking at where the vacant lots are relative to those flood areas to see if we can just keep them vacant, so that they, and put trees, so that we can make sure that at least a little bit more flood mitigation, you know, would be there. So, that's something that we've got the data on, we just haven't taken action on quite yet. But we do have the data on and wanna, you know, make sure we're working with you. But this inlet issue is part of that flood mitigation piece. I know you're doing it because of the permit, the PS, whatever it's called, permit. But to me, this is like super important. So, the fact that you're being proactive on our flood areas in this is great. I'm sure that you're looking at some other areas as well, hopefully, in terms of what other ways to be proactive relative to the inlets. That's what it sounds like.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I think, again, it's super important. So, thank you for that clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Sorry, I'm tired. I don't have any other questions. I also just wanted to thank you for your service, Director Mitchell. I would second what my colleague from the Seven said about the change in culture, the change in sense of urgency in the work. And so, you know, obviously wishing you the best with whatever, you know, you go into next. I know you'll be successful in that. And also wanna just thank the crews, the folks that are here, the staff. I mean, this work is a thankless job. Public Works is a job that is, or an agency that does a lot of very, I don't know, ugly, really the word to use, but like, y'all are in the trenches, whether we're talking about water, water safety, recycling, picking up trash. I mean, as you noted before, I did, I didn't do a whole shift, because I actually got hurt on the job, trying to lift the bag out, and decided to wrap up early, but obviously I had the luxury to be able to do that. But for me, it was important to see what folks were dealing with on a day to day and really open my eyes. So, I just wanna thank you, wanna thank all of your team and all the folks who aren't in this room, who keep our, our city clean and safe, keep our water drinkable and safe and some of the best in the country. And so, I just wanted to say that before I left out. I do have a one year old at home that may or may not wake up at 2:00 AM, so I'm gonna go to bed. Well, see, she's rolling the dice these days. But just thank you all for what you do. You are appreciated.
Yeah, I wanna get connected on doing a shift. I need like a day or two to recover after budget hearings. But can I work through Chief Moore Jackson on that? Thank you. Councilman Cohen, and then there were five left.
Thanks, Chair, and again, thank you, Director Mitchell, for your service and to your team as well. I wanna talk about illegal dumping, which remains a scourge across our city. In 2021, we passed the Neighbors Against Predatory Dumping Act to double the fines on illegal dumping, but it remains a big concern. What I'm specifically interested in is, we talked a little bit earlier about sort of the connection between DOT and DPW when it comes to sinkholes and other types of issues. Now, I'm interested in the connection between DPW and DHCD, as you knew was coming, where they issue the fines, and then your folks come and pick up the dumping. What we've seen a lot is that they either will or will not issue the fine, but then something happens where the ticket either gets lost or it just takes a really long time, and constituents express a lot of frustration over, I put in this three one one, you know, I may have even gotten the license plate or a picture of someone, but it seems no actions happened, because four days later, the trash is still there. What are we doing to specifically close that gap between DHCD and DPW around when illegal dumping occurs, making sure that it's really a team effort and that there's as close to simultaneous action between the two agencies as is possible?
Yes, so, we work closely with HCD on illegal dumping. Their special investigations unit send an investigator out to see if they could find any evidence of who put it there. And once they do that, they may or may not issue a fine. If they, if they find out who put it there, they found the evidence, then they will issue a fine. And then they submit a service request over to us to clean it up. We have a service level agreement of ten days. Right now, we have two. Right now, we have two units that work specifically with illegal dumping, but we have eight cleaning crews that work throughout the city, and we also have seven street crews and seven alley crews. So we have a team of crews that work for illegal dumping throughout the city. But specific to the special investigations unit at housing, we have two crews for the city to handle those specific items. And that's why the service request agreement, I mean, service level agreement is 10 days. So we may, we may get there in three days, it may take us a little longer, depending on how many service requests are in the system. So in those cases, I mean, if it's something that the resident feel is an extreme emergency, and I know all of it, we want it gone right away, they can file an escalation, and then we will go out, we'll send a supervisor out to see if we can collect it sooner. But we are within the service level agreement on almost 99% of the time. But if you're looking for four days, we don't, we just don't have the capacity to collect all the illegal dumping throughout the city within that timeframe.
No, and I appreciate that. 10 days is tough, right? I mean, by the end of 10 days, if there aren't a whole bunch of rats and rodents and flies and everything else, I mean, you know, it's just, that is a very long time for community members to wait to get their neighborhood cleaned. So I guess I am looking for ways that we can improve that efficiency. And again, I've always thought that if there could be some really direct collaboration between DHCD and DPW, I understand the piece about their special investigations unit, them going out and writing a ticket, and then passing the ticket to you all to come pick up the trash. But, you know, I know in the past, DPW had their own special investigations unit, this is before this administration. I wonder about revitalizing that, or just in some way, creating more of a synergy so that it doesn't feel to residents like we're just dropping the ball, because five, six, seven, eight, nine days later, there's still a huge pile of dumped trash outside the residence.
Yeah, so right now, we have a pilot program with, working with council member Burnett in his district, that we have a team of HCD, Wrexham Parks, I believe DOT is a part of it, and then also our crews, where we are, the way that the pilot works, there is specific hotspots that we're inspecting several times a week, and if there's trash, they were cleaning it up right away. So far, it's been very successful, and part of the request for funding was to get these small mini load packers for our street crews. Right now, our street crews are using pickup trucks. So once we get those trucks in, we'll be able to pick up the items faster, because the capacity in the vehicle will be larger. So you will, you will see, once we get those smaller load packers, the pilot will, will be able to impact the whole city with that type of program, where, like you're saying, when, once HCD puts in the request, we could send a truck right out, because we'll have the capacity of those vehicles that will allow us to pick up more, more items, more trash. So yes, we are working on that, and we can just, we can keep you updated.
And I just wanted to add, so a little over 30 days ago, we launched our City Services Sprint, and illegal dumping is one of the areas. It's the only area that we did not set a target, because for illegal dumping, it was more about learning about how the process works, and identifying some opportunities for efficiencies. So in addition to actually providing the service, we are actually doing a Sprint stat, so where we bring all the partners together that are a part of the city services process, and we start to do some of that process mapping, and that's what we're doing around illegal dumping. We're also looking at what other jurisdictions do, so this concept that you talked about as far as, you know, co-locating the teams or having the special investigations unit within DPW, we're seeing what the best practice is. We're also looking at the SLAs that other jurisdictions are able to do around illegal dumping as well. So this is a part of our City Services Sprint, and we're hopeful that at the end of 90 days, there'll be recommendations for how we can improve the service.
That's great, I appreciate that. And again, you know, fully understand and appreciate the capacity constraints that you all are existing under. It just does seem like an area where we as a city could be better and more efficient, and, you know, hoping that with the stat that the city administrator was talking about, the review, that we are able to figure out a path forward, and whether it's expanding that pilot that's in council member Burnett's district, or some other way for us to get there. I just know that it is an ongoing frustration for residents in Baltimore, and we need to get better. Thank you, appreciate it.
[inaudible]
No, I'm good for now, nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, you've been on, you and I have emailed about this. There is a city ordinance that says, when a vacant building becomes vacant and is officially designated vacant, DHCD will notify DPW to turn off the water. That has never, ever happened, as far as I know. And the, we, I'm just wondering if you've been working with DHCD to come up with what the solution is? The reason that this is important, obviously, is, you know, in the wintertime, we have pipe breaks, and obviously, this winter, the fire department came out to turn off the water all the time, and of course, it disrupts, you know, the neighbor next door. Also, once we are, I am very optimistic that we will get to a point where we're actually rehabbing these properties, and the cost of rehab is just higher if there's water damage. And you could tell I'm from Baltimore, because I just said water, the way Baltimoreans do it, even though, I'm not from here, I just, I've been here for 30 years. And then also, you know, it's just something that should have been done, it was in the law. Obviously, when you start it back up again, because I'm confident you will, or start it up, period, because it hasn't been done, there's also this sort of, the backlog of the 1,500,000 that are there. So can you tell me what the plan is around this?
So thank you for that question. The plan right now is, we are currently working on our standard operating procedure for our meter techs and staff, also within CSSD, to be able to track this information and assign the work orders for that work. So we're nearing completion of the final SOP. There was a couple of questions we had that we're working with our law department to clarify as part of that standard operating procedure, and we should be getting those results in soon, in order to finalize it and implement it. We talk with DHCD, we're working with them right now to prioritize those outstanding vacant properties. I believe in the last communication we had, there was about 130 properties that were city-owned that they wanted us to help prioritize. And so we'd be looking at those properties first. And then finally, we're just shoring up all of our internal staffing and operations, that we have the dedicated team and resources, both in the, with the meter techs, and then those that are tracking the information from CSSD into the utility billing system, so that this information is full circle, so that the crews know where they're supposed to go out to, so that the information is tracked in UMAX, and then we're also reporting that information back to housing, and that we're communicating back and forth between the two agencies.
So do you anticipate, obviously, there's priority properties that they've given you, and that should be done, and that's sort of your test case, really?
Right.
To make sure that that process is going, so I totally get that. Then there's the 14 and so thousand properties that we need to get to. So you'll be rolling out a plan for what that looks like, and sort of prioritizing? I think, obviously, those of us who have a lot of vacant properties in our district would certainly, and I would speak for my colleague in the 9th District who has the most, that we should probably start there, and make sure that that's taken care of. I mean, I think this is a, this is a fairly big deal, and so the fact that you want to, that you're moving in this direction to implement the law is really helpful. It's, I just want to get a sense of what is our, what is our timeline, how are we planning on moving this forward? So there's the sort of, the backlog, and then there's the, every time there's a new one-
Right.
-coming back up, because unfortunately, that still happens, to turn off the, to turn off the water. And by the way, let me just say that BGE, Madam CAO, has come to me and said they want the same notification from DHCD, so that they can turn off the electric. So I'll bring that up in the DHCD hearing, but that's, you know, just FYI.
Yeah, and no, those are all great points, Councilwoman, and so that's part of the process as well, too. So the great part about the DHCD data is that it's categorized in tiers, right? So we're not looking at all, trying to address all 14,000 at the same time, and they're helping us prioritize what they believe is the top priority work, and then we're going to work through in buckets. So as we start to go through those top tiers, we're going to be able to track that information, determine how long it takes for the work orders to get assigned, how long it takes for the crews to go out and complete the work, and then use those metrics to be able to say, based off of that staffing level, based off of how long it takes to complete the work, we should be able to complete tier two in X amount of time, we should be able to complete tier three in X amount of time. And as we get through that lesson, we start working through this, and determining how long that's going to take, we're happy to share that information with you as well.
Sure, so I'm hoping that, I guess by the end of the calendar year, that we would have, you would have done some of those tests, and to figure out what the process is going to be, and that we would have a better timeline for what the schedule looks like in 2024? Is that accurate to say?
That is-
I'm actually giving you a lot of leeway here.
That is the goal. We've been talking with the team, we've had multiple meetings internally about this, and how soon we can get this implemented. Like I mentioned, we're still trying to finalize some legal language that's included in the SOP, to make sure we have all of our processes in place, but as soon as that's ready to go, and as soon as we, we're continuing, working with DHCD on the data, but we should be able to provide you at least those metrics and get those top tiers completed before the end of the calendar year.
I would imagine that the legal issue is, if the owner is going to give you permission to come onto the property, I would say that the owner is derelict in not taking care of the property, so we should just shut off the water. I would also say that you're probably going to end up looking at, you know, usage, just to make sure there's nobody in the home, I get that. However, we do know that because we have an affordable housing crisis, we do have squatters. And so I would just be mindful of the fact that, you know, part of us turning off the water is just making sure that, you know, and the electric, when we get to BGE's point here, because of, to avoid the fires that happened when there were squatters in my district. So I just, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons for doing this, and so I don't want to have a situation where there's been a lot of high usage because of, even though it is a vacant and abandoned property, that at least we would know that there are people there, that we have to get MOHS and others. So just to make sure that in the SOPs, if we're seeing usage, because you can see it, that there's a process to let, you know, MOHS know and all of that, because we just, we definitely want to make sure that they're taken care of, but at the same time, we're securing the property as well.
No, those are all great points as well, too, and so as we continue to meet with DHCD, and we finalize those steps for it, we can easily bring in the other offices and agencies to help kind of support and see what that would also entail.
Okay, so I hope to get some updates at least, you know, three months from now, and then by the end of the year?
That's correct.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DPW's been here since 6:00 p.m., it's going on 11 o'clock. I appreciate not only their responsiveness and their commitment, but also their family's commitment to ensuring. Our budget director, our budget director has been here since 9:00 a.m., our amazing budget director has been here since 9:00 a.m. With that, you know, obviously, with that, I'm going to put any questions or concerns I have in writing. I'm going to ask that the council, as we continue to do the due diligence of this body, that we be mindful of timing, and be very appreciative of the level of professionalism and responsiveness that we received today from the administration. So with that, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, I'll put any additional questions or concerns in writing.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership throughout this process. Councilman Glover?
Well, I just have a statement, I just want to say before we leave this afternoon, well, tonight, that I am greatly, greatly appreciative of DPW. As you all know, that's where I come from, that's where my heart is. I watch how individuals like, you know, Kedrick and Mike Lucas, and even Alan Robinson, how they came through the mud to be in the positions that they're in today. And I think that each and every last one of you that are here today are not here because of a salary, it's here because you love the city of Baltimore, and you want to make it work. It's a tough job, Baltimore has its challenges, but I know that each and every day that I get up, I know that in my community, I'm going to see that trash man or that trash woman removing something from my district. And when I make those phone calls, I think about when I call Ms. Jackson, and I call Ms. Kason, and they reach out to Guy, and they reach out to Bethia, when we had to remove over 3,100 tires, and it was done, like, in a matter of like 12 hours. It was one phone call, the next day, they were on top of it. I appreciate everything you guys do, and I appreciate everything those men and women and people do with DPW. So I just want to say, continue to keep your heads up, you're going to always have ally with me and the council, because you guys are where I come from. And I say it again, and I'm saying it over and over again, the men and women that I talk to, they appreciate the new morale that they see in DPW, and I know it starts without the rector. And I'm asking you again, and I've said it before, you know, I understand we have family issues, and families do come first, but I want to say to you, we appreciate you, and we want you to stay. So think twice about leaving in June. Thank you so much. Like, Russell said, he said he would drop the mic, I'm gonna drop the mic. Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you. So when we went to this before, Chairman said we should come back to it, and so if I can just please get a yes or no, was the timing of the rollout of the Blue Binns a mistake?
No.
Okay. In Service 663, I had mentioned before that the budget went up from 30 million to 40 million over the past two years. I know that labor is like the main expense, as it should be, but the employees did not get anywhere near a 33% raise, nothing even close. They should have, because they're more than 33% underpaid in that bureau, but my question to you is, where'd the additional $10 million a year, where's it going?
Councilman, I would be happy to pull together that horizon of data and provide an analysis of changes over that time, working with our partners at DPW.
Okay, thank you. So if you can just highlight that, when you follow up to my earlier request about having the actuals and the actual spends for last year versus what the budget was, because we know there's a lot of vacancies, to see where that, where that went. My next question is, and thank you for your first answer to clarify the information, the misinformation that we heard yesterday from the planning director about, about your agency. So can you also just clarify for us whether or not DPW met the requirements for the public notification for the E. coli outbreak? public notification for the E. coli outbreak?
Thank you for the questions. I actually think it's a wonderful question. The public notification for the Drinking Water Act is a very convoluted legal analysis. But to answer your question, yes, we notified the public. What you've, and we had discussions with M D E, our state partner in this, their dispute or characterization was the form of the notification? And of course, D P W disputes that assertion. However, we did notify the public according to the Drinking Water regulations.
Okay, thank you. I asked this question at a previous hearing. I was told I'd get follow-up information on it. I never got that information. So how much did this rebranding cost?
Councilmember, I believe that was provided previously at a pre, follow-up to a past hearing. So we can pull up that information and resend it to you.
So the one piece of information that you guys did provide was specifically around the cost to produce this new logo and the company associated with that, and that cost was $40,000 for this logo. But we, I had asked what the total cost was in general for the rebranding across the board, and I was told that it wasn't as high as we thought it would be, because we're going to be replacing items as they go out. But there's obviously significant costs to rebranding in any company, and so I was told I would get a full scope of that, but all I got was how much the logo cost.
We could resend the information that we previously sent, but we believe we answered that question in the past hearing, or at least the follow-up from that hearing.
Okay. So then that means, so the only piece of information that's relevant, the only cost associated with the rebrand, you're saying was just the cost to produce a new logo?
That's correct, but we can, like I said, we can go back and pull up the same information and send that back.
Okay. How much have the laborers on the trucks' pay increased in the past year?
I would defer to the Labor Commissioner or the Budget Director.
I'm sorry, Councilman, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, what was the, what was the salary increase? What percentage increase did the employees who work on the back of the, of the trash trucks, what was their pay increase over the past year?
Um.
And what's their projected increase for this coming budget year?
So the negotiations with AFSME are ongoing to finalize their wage increase for fiscal '24. I do not recall the, the exact increase that was part of the '23 budget, but I can get that information and circle back with you on that.
Councilman, hang on one second. Councilwoman Ramos had another question. Unless it's direct follow-up to what-
Yeah, I mean, direct on, on that note, when's the last increase that they received, and how much was it?
There, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but I would be happy to get that and provide it as a follow-up tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the budget book, page 276, and then again on 300, there are two items that are unallocated funds normally in the rest of the budget book. There's an explanation about what the unallocated funds are anticipating, but they, it wasn't explained in the, in the book on those pages. So I wonder, Director, either Director, if you would, if you know that. I guess 276 is Service 661 in the Public Right-of-Way Cleaning. And the other one is on page 300, Surface Water Management, unless I missed it. But normally, in the budget book, we're, we're getting a description of what unallocated appropriation is. Is it just anticipated federal funds, anticipated state funds? You can also get back to me on that later.
Councilwoman Ramos, those unallocated amounts are appropriations where the agency is anticipating potential grant awards.
Right. I mean, that's usually what they're saying in the other parts of the book. So do we know that it's federal or state, or we're just-
A combination. It looks like in the Public Right-of-Way Cleaning, based off the funds that are appropriated, that would likely be unallocated special funds. And then in Service 674, it would be a combination of potential federal and state grants.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer.
In this year's budget, how many positions are reclassified in the agency that are over six-figure positions?
I don't have that number off the top of, are you talking about reclassifications that were completed in fiscal '23 and reflected in the '24 budget?
Correct.
I would, I will have to reference the E. C. C. agendas for this year and circle back with the exact number for you.
Okay, and if you can provide what those positions are, because when I received the spreadsheet of all D P W employees that make over six figures, I noticed that there were certain positions that saw significant pay increases in short periods of time. And so obviously, that could only happen if you reclassify, and so I'd like what that figure is. Director, are any of these employees who are making over six figures a year, are they allowed to work remotely for long periods? I'm not talking about like a couple days here or there, or if they're sick, or there's a personal matter, but I'm saying for long periods of time, like maybe a month at a time or, or longer?
We would have to look at the list, and we'll, we can provide that answer.
We don't know if people are allowed to work remotely? Like, are, are any of those positions, remote positions, that?
Again, I don't have the list in front of me. I would have to see that list, and I would provide an answer.
Okay. Is there anybody who's a direct report to you that's on the executive team that's allowed to work remotely for extended periods of time?
On our executive team, no.
On page 273, Service 660, in '22, it said there was 11 positions for a total cost of 1.9 million, which averages out to 176,000. In '24, there's 13, two additional positions for 3.324, which averages out to $255,000 per. Maybe the Budget Office can answer why, you know, what, what that's including and why are those numbers on average so different?
Yes. So when we're looking at the fiscal '22 actual, in this particular service, there are actuals for contractual services. In fiscal '22, we're about just under 390,000. And the budget amount for contractual services in this service is about 1.8 million dollars. So I would be happy to look at the fiscal '22 actuals to explain the, the budget variation in fiscal '22.
Okay. So although they're side by side, you're saying there's no correlation between the fact that it says the 1.9 million for 11 positions versus a 3.3 million for 13?
Yeah, because if you, if you flip to page 274 and look at the, the service budget by object, you can see that the, the salary budget is, was 1.1, or the salary actual in fiscal '22 was about 1.1 million. And then the budget in '23 was about 1.1, and it's up to 1.2 in fiscal '24. That reflects the creation of those two new positions.
Gotcha. Okay, so I see the contractual services on line three. Thank you.
Yep.
Director, I know we've gotten a few different numbers. They were all in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 million, but how much money in ARPA dollars have you guys requested? D P W put together a packet of ARPA requests. We've discussed this at previous hearings. How much money was the total ARPA request from D P W?
Councilman, we can get the full request amount from the, from the MORP team.
Come on. You guys don't know how much you requested in ARPA funding? We've, we've spoken about this topic at length. You don't have a ballpark figure of how much you requested in ARPA funding?
I want to be able to provide you with an accurate number, a good ballpark number, based upon our discussion today. I don't have that with me, so unless the Budget Office have it, we, I would have to get that to you later.
Okay. I mean, you said you know what the agency needs, you know what your capital needs are. Is the number over 100 million?
We're going to take a one-minute recess here. Director Mitchell had to use the restroom. All right, Councilville, 23-0381, ordinance estimates for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, back in session. Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you. I, Director, a lot of large agencies across the state, I think one example would be the-
Actually, Councilman, can you hang on one second? Director?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I can ask, answer the ARPA question, but also understanding the timing, and we have a lot of our employees here that, that's here very-
Director, everyone that, that, I believe the Councilman's going to be focusing on ARPA-related and solid waste. Is that the scope of that, Councilman?
No, I got, I got diverse questions, but they're all pretty simple questions that if you just respond to them and answer them, we'd probably get through this in the next 10 minutes.
Okay. Director, let's, let's excuse all of your staff that are not senior staff, that are not testifying. Well, you release who you want.
Everyone that's not in this gallery, you can, you can enjoy your, enjoy your family. So everybody out there, thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Appreciate you all. Councilman Schleifer, floor is yours.
You said, I'm sorry, you said you had an answer about the ARPA?
Yes, and I do want to apologize to this committee, Chair Costello and Councilwoman Schleifer. I took a restroom break. I just want to apologize for delay. But for the ARPA dollars, we received about, we requested about $207 million in ARPA funding.
And how much did you get?
It looks like we're being awarded around $15 million.
Okay. Thank you. Some large agencies have, in different parts in the country, I've, I've read that their local Inspector General has an investigator assigned, a representative assigned to those agencies. Usually, it's, the benefit is more of on a preventative side, that when there's questions, that they can readily get answered. Would you welcome having an Inspector General Investigator assigned to D P W that worked within the agency if that was provided in the budget?
I mean, that's the question of the administration. We welcome transparency in all we do here in D P W.
The seven new positions that you're requesting for the administration, for your administration this year, did any of those, have any of those people been hired and put in any other positions until those positions become available?
I'd have to look into the specifics. I know one of the staff we have within our procurement office may be in a double fill right now, and so I'd have to look at the details on that position to figure out the, the right answer there. Because, because we are, we are focusing, obviously, on, on financial procurement staff, and so that procurement manager, I don't believe it's the same position, but I just have to go and look at it. That's the only one that I would know about that potentially could be causing a double fill issue that we'd have to address.
Gotcha. But, but the other six of them are for sure not already on board.
That's correct.
Those are ones you post and, and go through the process. Okay. There were some questions about street sweeping. So is street sweeping happening on every street in the city at least once a month?
So, street sweeping is citywide. There, there's gateway street, gateways sweeping, there's quadrant sweeping that doesn't have enforcement, and there is the posted routes throughout the city. So as long as, if we have crews available, then we sweep the streets. I don't, the, the general answer is yes, but there may be streets that haven't been swept for many reasons. Cars parked, a truck broke down. But in general, the, the program is up and running, and we're completing the routes.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And the reason I'm asking, there are certain neighborhoods in my district that get swept multiple times a week, and there are certain neighborhoods in my district that never, ever see a street sweeper. And I had brought this up at a previous hearing, and I followed up on that, and what I had requested was maps of the actual street sweeping routes for my district. I don't need to see citywide, just strictly just my district. And I was told, hey, you know, we can set up a meeting and talk about it, but I, I really would like a map of the street sweeping routes, the routes that are handed to the drivers. And I know the drivers that work in my, in my area, and I know that there's areas they don't go to. And that's why I'd like to just see, have a copy of those maps that are handed to them for their routes, so that we can see the neighborhoods that are completely being missed, and then we can take corrective action. Is that something that can be provided to me?
Yes, I believe we provided those maps the first time you requested it.
I, I only got an old map that showed certain gateways, but I did not get a map that confirmed that areas that I was told were getting street swept were like, are actually included in that. So if I can get an up-to-date one showing what's being done, or maybe if you have this route tracking, perhaps you can just take one month's worth of data. It could be last month, it could be the month before that, and just show me the map that the street sweepers actually went to over the course of that month, so that we can, we can correct that.
Yeah, so I, I can pull out, I can get the maps for your, for your district. I mean, I thought we provided it, but if we have not provided all that you're looking for, we can go back and pull those maps for you. For street sweeping, the routing software was just installed maybe two weeks ago, so we don't have data just yet on that. The, the drivers are still going through training and everything, but we do have the route maps that we can provide for you. And also, if you, if you have a list of those streets that you believe did not have street sweeping, and we can look at our A V L system to see if indeed we have been missing those streets for some reason, and, and make sure that they're not missed going forward.
Right. So- Right. So just to close that out, I have received some old maps that shows projected. But what I'm looking for is what's actually being done. So I understand if I got to wait another few weeks, maybe once you have a full month's worth of data, maybe five weeks, six weeks. But just when you have that, if you can provide that to me, so we can physically see what's being done. And I'm happy to meet and review that with you. If it needs more explaining, you know, if you need to explain it to me, what I'm looking at, that's fine. But I would like to do that in the next month.
Sure.
So why is DPW permitting not in the same system and process as DHCD permits, the E-permits? What I routinely have happening is somebody wants to build an addition, someone's building a house, somebody's doing something, and they can't get their use in occupancy, they can't get to the finish line. And it's one of two things. The last step is usually the fire marshal, which is not the fire marshal's fault. They just happen to be last, and people are already fed up by the time they get to that step. But they're pretty responsive. But the part that's not very responsive is the DPW stormwater plans and reviews. I'm not sure if anybody actually checks that email, because I email it and don't get responses. But what DHCD has told me is that it's a separate process. And so when an applicant is looking at their permits, they won't see the DPW piece of it. And so therefore, they think they've done everything, and they think they've commuted everything. But then there's a whole separate track of DPW. So why is it in a separate system?
That's an excellent question. And we believe that we're utilizing the same system. We transitioned over to the electronic system. So I know Kim Grove just recently was released, but I believe that we are utilizing that same system, but we can respond back. But I believe we're using the same system that's being used citywide.
Okay. I mean, it's not, it's not within the same stuff. And I end up having to call Kim to try to understand what's missing from it. But I'll take that as a follow-up, to just understand what that is. And I know DHCD is redoing some of their permitting system. And so I would like clarity and a commitment that it all will be on the same platform, on the same page, that an applicant can get from start to finish in one piece. And I have a few last questions from last year that still remain unanswered. One of my questions was, the meter techs were allowed to stay home and were paid to stay home for nine months. I never got an answer as to why that happened. Can we get that answer today?
I wasn't, they have been here since I've been working. That was prior to my tenure here. I can't answer a question based upon a previous administration, but I can tell you during my tenure here as a Public Works Director, our meter shops, our meter techs have been working in the field every day, doing the work as prescribed.
Yeah. And to just repeat what we discussed last year, when you said the same thing, was that you have employees who are still working here, who were working then, and that somebody would get that answer and get back to me on it. And so when can I expect to have an answer as to why the meter shop was closed for nine months, and people were paid to stay home?
We can ask our prior acting director during that time and seeing what he, decision he made. He is still an employee of the city.
Okay. When you and I met, when you were just starting, one of the first concerns I brought to you was the long wait times at the transfer station. You had shared with me that your prior experience was specifically in solid waste, and that you were going to develop a plan, how to alleviate those long wait times, and increase capacity at the Northwest Transfer Station. So what ideas have been developed that will help alleviate those long wait times, which would decrease the illegal dumping that's happening around those, around the transfer station? And what could be done to increase capacity at the transfer station?
The transfer, that's a great question. I think, you know, I actually, myself and Yvonne and our team, actually walked the entire transfer station. It's just not an adequate site for what's needed. Expansion of that hauler's program at that location, I think it has about four or five bays that you can drop off. There's just no expansion capabilities without impacting our solid waste operations that use that for the transfer of solid waste. The plan is the east side transfer station, and we're working on doing, we received some money, $7 million from the state. We're working and getting the design for that. We did identify a location that that transfer station potentially could be at, and now beginning the scope of work to do some of the design around what that would look like for an east side transfer station. I think that's going to be really critical, not just the expansion of that program, the hauler's program. But I think it will help us be more efficient with our operations, where we can drop loads in the east side and the west side of town.
Look, I agree. Having another transfer station would be very helpful, and I fully support that. That still, I suggested a couple of suggestions, and I don't know, I'm not a solid waste expert like you are. And so I had put forth a couple logistical suggestions in which you said you would look into. And I'm just curious what the follow-up and feedback is on that. My short-term, simple fix, I had suggested back when we met the first time, was to do two things. To one, increase the dumpster size. And number two, also, when trash trucks are coming through, which they do all the time, that a driver get out of that car, and when they're moving dumpsters, instead of shutting down production 15 minutes every hour, which is what ultimately happens, there's one person that has a CDL at the transfer station, who has to move dumpster one someplace else, then come back, move the second one, and then bring them back and put them there. And so unhooking it and doing that, that's a 15-minute process, start to finish. I've timed it out multiple times. If you had two drivers there, or when a driver is driving through and dumping from their stuff that they have in the trash truck, and got out and took seven minutes, and got behind a truck, and moved those dumpsters, and moved the other ones in, it would cut that in half. And so the fact that they're doing that every single hour would increase the capacity there, and would increase the production there by another approximately hour a day easily. And so is that something that you would consider doing, or that you've looked into?
I think that's a great idea, and we can look into it and see if operationally that would work. That's an excellent idea, Councilman Schleifer.
Okay. And the second, the second thing that I spoke about, which would obviously involve some capital money, but also is possible, is that the ramp that they dump off of, there is space on another side to make a second ramp, so that you can have four dumpsters in the area, and you can be dumping double the amount of trash at the same time. That was something that you were going to look into, what that capital cost would be. Have you looked into that?
I think if you're referring on the other side of the tipping floor, that's our residential drop-off location.
That's what I'm referencing, the residential drop-off.
We would have to look at that. We know we have many residents that use that area for our residential drop-off locations. You know, if we were to change that, you know, those customers would have to go to another site to be able to drop off. So if that's the location you're referencing...
No. So sometimes residents drop it off the cliff part. I'm not talking about going around back to the dumpsters that are around back. I'm talking about the ramp where the small haulers go, or if you have a larger, if you have a truck full of stuff, or a car full of stuff, you go up the ramp, and then you back up, and you drop it off the back of the cliff into the dumpster. What I had suggested to you was that you add another set of dumpsters right next to it. So you have, instead of having two dumpsters right there, you have four dumpsters, and then you just have a separate ramp that goes up the other side.
I think what would be great, because I'm conceptionually trying to get it, if me and you can walk the site together, and I think with your ideas, with our team, there may be some opportunities for that type of growth for that program. I think it would be great if we can do a site visit together and walk that site, and see what opportunities exist.
Anytime you'd like. I'm there approximately once a week, dropping off my excess recycling. And so I'm there all the time. My last question, when you and I, when we were on a community walk on Belvedere last year, you recall, we had a long conversation about a variety of things. One thing that you said you were going to get to the bottom of, that I haven't gotten any follow-up on, was there was two separate incidents at my house that occurred both around the same time that I was very critical of the agency. Both incidents in which, I mean, I have security cameras, you know, on every inch of my property. It's on my house. I can see the full perimeter of my property. So it's not really disputed, you know, whether or not DPW employees were there. They were. The question was why, and who sent them there. And, you know, there was a very specific message that was delivered out to the media around the time, the same day as one of those incidents. You told me you would investigate that. Have you gotten to the bottom of that situation?
I mean, we, I think I even emailed you, Councilmember Schleifer, what we wanted to see, because we heard that it was footage of our employees there. We were asking you and Yvonne, I think your neighbor at that time, if you could provide that footage. We haven't received that footage yet. So if you can provide that footage to us, we can finalize that investigation and move forward. Because I know, as you said today, and even prior, that there are several cameras that saw our crews out there. That footage will definitely help us be able to finalize that investigation. But at this point, we haven't received it.
Director, I provided the footage for you. I showed it to you from my cellphone when we were standing out there on Belvedere. You said you had tracking on the trucks to confirm it. You guys weren't confirming, first you said the trucks weren't there, the inspector general got involved, then you provided the information to her that, yes, indeed, they were there. Somehow or another, you were going to then provide the information as to how your communications director at the time knew whether or not my recycling was wet or dry, based on when I put out my recycling or not. That was all information that you have. That's information that's readily available to you. I showed you the video footage of the trucks speeding down the block as soon as I walked out of my house. And so you haven't gotten to the bottom of those two situations.
Again, if you can share that footage with me, I honestly have not seen the footage.
Did you, I asked you on, hold on, I asked you on the street, when we were out there on Belvedere, I said, can you please speak to the leadership, the supervisors and the employees who were out there at the time, to ask them, who sent them there, why they were there, and how they got their message back to your former communications director? You said you would look into it. You weren't sure if you could talk directly to the employees or not. You weren't sure if that was something you were allowed to do. And do you recall this conversation?
Again, if you, this investigation could be concluded tomorrow, if you can provide me with the footage. And I apologize that I may not recollect seeing it, or that I haven't received any email. But if you can provide that, I promise, we will close it. But we cannot close the investigation, or even commence it, because we haven't seen that footage.
Did you ask the employees who were out there, that you have the information, you know who they are, you had the tracking on the truck, did you ask them why they were there, and who sent them there, and who reported back to your communications director? Did you ask your communications director where she got that information from, about the status of how damp my recycling may or may not have been, based on if I put it out the night before, the morning of? And there was a news report on it. I mean, it was on the news, where my neighbors called the agency and called your communications director a liar, because they too showed, they showed some of the footage on the news. Okay? You saw this. And so did you ask those employees why they were there, and who sent them there? Did you ask them? Did you ask your communications director? Did you ask these employees? Did you ask any leadership out there, how, who sent them there, and why they were there?
Sir?
It's a yes or no?
I am not fully aware of what you're talking about, sir. But again, if you can provide that footage, I would definitely report back to my team and do the investigation.
Did you see the news report on it?
Pardon me?
Did you see the news report on it?
Yes, I did.
You did, okay. So you saw that. You saw the information my neighbors gave. You saw the video footage that was posted there. It was very simple, to ask the employees whether or not, you know, who sent them there, why they were there. You obviously didn't do that. I think that that is a big problem, when you have, when you have employees who are targeting an elected official, and you don't feel the need to go and find out who sent them there, why they sent them there, and why those people are communicating directly with your former communications director, who's still employed with your agency at a high salary.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So I think that there is likely a formal channel that we can do this through. So I can check back one with the Human Resources Department and/or the Law Department, to determine if there is a way for you to formally submit that request, so we can do a formal investigation outside of the agency, and have a third party to handle that, if you would like.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, C.A.O. Leach. Colleagues, any other questions? Seeing as there's none, Director Mitchell, you and your team, I want to thank you for staying here with us this evening. I have a ton of people in your department to thank, but it's late. I want everyone to get home. But thank you to all the hard-working women and men in the Department of Public Works. We appreciate their service. We're now in recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.